Hello everyone attending, just letting you know we are having technical difficulties on our end and we should be up and running when we can. Uh so please stand by as we get that started. Hola a todos, nomas quiere ser un anuncio que ahorita tenemos uh dificultades técnicos uh a comenzar la junta. Si nomas queden con nosotros por un poquito, ahí vamos a comenzar. Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And these results are fairly interesting. Do you currently own a golf cart? Of the responses, 77 people said no, while 23% said yes. If the city were to allow a private golf cart and you live within a mile of the golf course, would you be interested in driving your private golf course? 79% said yes. But do you currently live within an adjacent neighborhood? 82% said they do. If yes, which neighborhood? And then that obviously varies given the landscape there. Would you be interested in trailering your private golf cart? No, they would not. They'd prefer to drive their golf cart directly to the course itself. And do you believe the private golf cart should be permitted? And an overwhelming percent said, 82% said yes, which is an interesting note there. And then if private golf carts would be permitted, would you personally use your private golf cart on the course? 71% said yes. And then additional comments were also added. And then for the next slide, Delilah touched on it a little bit for the personalized motor vehicle. So this is something that's outside of your golf course now, golf cart now. You see, they look like retrofitted scooters that allow your golf bag on there. Personalized motor vehicles are MPVs allowed on the golf course. They would follow the same rules as the rental fleet does now. And then they would be allowed potentially to be on the golf course. And I think Paul, you are going to wrap it up for us.
Great, thank you. So, Son? Okay. So a couple of additional, I guess, points here before we open it up for discussion. There are some recommendations for potential requirements. You can see them listed there. I would say that this probably is not a list that includes everything. We'd probably need to go back and kind of define some other items. You know, what kind of liability? Well, the waiver, the liability waiver is listed there. But there are some other things to consider, speed, et cetera. Also, coming up, I believe in October, there is a fees and charges discussion that City Council will be seeing a presentation on that includes all of parks, recreation, and golf. So a whole list of fees. So again, you know, there's some under court, golf course requirements there. At some point, if this does pass, we'd have to set some kind of fee potentially, whether it be an annual fee, whether it be a daily use fee, whatever that might be. So here are some potential discussion items for you, which the list is long as you can see. I think one of the main things, it kind of seems like in the discussion tonight, there was been a lot of talk about, okay, golf carts, private golf carts. Are they allowed? Are they not allowed? What are the requirements? Or, you know, what's the speed limit? Does it have to have taillights? Does it have to have signals? Does it have to be within one mile of the golf court? So the municipal code itself, I believe, is something certainly that warrants quite a bit of discussion this evening and what that might look like. But depending on how far down you want to get into the details, some of these other items like where crossings might be, what might be the safest way to do that. What the expenses might be to, you know, create some trails or some additional gates, et cetera, around the golf course. So. If you'd like, I can leave this slide up for discussion. If you need those for, leave that up?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Kim.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for the presentation altogether. Specific for Carl, I think. And with regards to the mapping as to where it looks like there's going to be some pain points, I just wanted to see if there's a potential summary as far as where are those pain points at? Because my opinion is that I think that those pain points, meaning the safety issues, face safety concerns, should be addressed first before any, anything is allowed. Does that make sense?
Do you mind if I make one comment on that?
Sure.
So, thank you, Desiree. Desiree brought up to me some notes that were part of the discussion and the, and the presentation. So I'll just, I'll just read some of these bullet points that the advisory committee kind of came up with as part of their discussion. Will carts and bikes, will carts and bikes play nicely on the bike path if they have to share that space? Will children on bicycle and a golf cart going by, will they play nicely? Will kids get hit by carts and drivers not paying attention? Carts using sidewalks where pedestrians have issues walking because of a cart? Will that be a thing? 112th Avenue, would we need to change the speed limit or make an exception from Chambers to Parkside Drive? 120th and Chambers will eventually be a four-lane street, which Carl mentioned. Does the city want to enter a MOU with an HOA to allow access?
So. Those, those are some grave concerns, right? I get that, right? I mean, obviously, in a perfect world, you would think that bikes and golf carts would get along just fine. But we know that's not reality. I think there's a lot of, you know, what comes first, a chicken or the egg situation, where you're figuring out, there's a lot of safety points that has to be addressed first. And I think that's where I think some form of additional research, additional manpower that may, may need to be done in order to fully have a detailed plan before golf carts were, would be allowed, if at all they would be allowed. Does that make sense? So I think, again, back to the, the map, though, I just, I was curious. Carl, I know you touched on it on some areas, but obviously the crossing over 120th and obviously some of the gating issues. I think that's something I would want to see is more of a summary as far as those areas where they would have to be reconciled. In addition to, obviously, everything else that Delilah had sent, you know, passed over to you as well. So my opinion, I think that, I think we, there's still a lot more work that needs to be done as far as when it comes to determining whether or not golf carts should be allowed. In addition to that, if they are going to be allowed, then it would be a matter of getting those things taken care of first before golf carts are allowed on the road. Not saying allowed on the, on the right of ways and all. So.
See you, Manager Rajidju. Yep, something you want to say?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to tackle specifically one piece that Councilmember Kim brought up. And it's about golf carts on the roads. I think fundamentally, right, there's a, there's a threshold question to be asked. And that's, that's a decision point around what is the purpose of the roads that we have? And what do we want as an outcome? Are roads there to provide movement of vehicles, movement of pedestrians in a safe and a, and a protected fashion? Or are we putting, like, when we think about, and what we heard with this, providing exemptions and/or lowering speed limits? And you have a couple of good data points coming before you this year with the Safety Action Plan, the Transportation Master Plan, that will feed you data and information to be able to make that decision point on how to look at golf carts, private golf carts, access of private golf carts, or whether or not private golf carts should be an allowance on public streets and where on public streets and how on public streets. So I would say you should be using those two data sets as guiding your discussion and your decision points on that threshold matter. And that may then help you in broadening your thought process to then the greater application of access.
And depending, and depending on where that goes, it would then make it, it would then guide us into that direction, whether or not do we, do we want to include golf carts or not?
I think so. Yes, no. I mean, they can be mutually exclusive. I mean, you can trailer it, you can bring it. That doesn't necessarily mean you have to drive it on, on the road. So there's, there are obviously opportunities and options of being able to get a private golf cart to the golf course without having to, you know, drive it along Chambers, 120th, 124th. So there are other ways of still being able to, to skin that cat. But I would say, when you're thinking about that, that threshold of gaining direct access along some of those major thoroughfares where we have 40, 45 miles per hour that, you know, are our major backbone infrastructure for, you know, 40,000 to 45,000 people in the northern range, you know, what's, what's the primary focus and use of those roads? And do you make a, do you make a change? Do you give an exemption for this particular use? Use the data to help inform that discussion when that data is available for you to weigh in on it.
Hence the reason why I think there needs to be further discussion, further research, further, like, basically getting all those challenges that Carl had mentioned, right? Amongst certain roads, taking care of first, or even when we're talking about the 120th widening or even Chambers Road potentially being widened at some point, right? All of that together should be in place first before deciding, you know, where or where those golf carts potentially could navigate to if, again, if they were allowed at some point.
Yeah. So to be fair on both sides of the conversation, right? You could, from a scenario, say, hey, I want to allow golf carts at the, at, at the golf course. Right? You could easily say that tomorrow, my team and I would work on being able to work through a waiver process to where it would be incumbent upon the user to figure out how to get from point A to point B by bringing their golf court, whether it's on a truck, trailer, however they choose to get it, right? We can still be able to accomplish that while still working through that threshold issue in parallel about Chambers, 104th, 112th, 120th, and thinking about the priority of which we've had those roads and how we've thought about those roads in the, in the bigger picture.
All right. Mayor Protonel, and then Councilmember Ford.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for all the work that you put into this presentation. I really very much appreciate it. And Desiree, I didn't recognize you earlier. That's a big change. I like it. Okay. All right. Back, back to business. By the way, there will be a light at 117th where there is currently just a pedestrian thing happening that was approved unanimously by the City Council recently. There is an underpass at Landmark and 124th. So there is a way to get back and forth across 124th. I do, I come at this from a different point of view, I think, than a lot of people who may be looking at this right now because of having been raised in a golfing family. So I have many trips that involved going to golfing communities. And my parents lived in a golfing community in Denver, in southeast Denver. So my brothers moved there when they were eight and 10. And there were golf carts on the roads going back and forth. The boys had bicycles. I was in college at that point. But there was never an incident, nothing, nothing to worry about in terms of collisions with bikers and golf cart users. Because, in fact, it's probably safer in some ways because they have 360 vision. And they're just really, for the most part, puttering along. There is someone, by the way, in Reunion who has a golf cart and drives it on the road because, as Delilah pointed out, it is allowed by our code. You have to have front headlights, you have to have back headlights, you have to have a windshield, you have to have rearview mirrors. But it is allowed. So there doesn't have to be a discussion about whether golf carts are allowed on our roads because they currently are. It would be, in fact, changing our municipal code to say, no, you can't do that anymore. That would be what, what would have to occur. So at the moment, you can pretty much go where you want in a, in a golf cart. There's nothing at the moment that says you can't drive on Chambers in a golf cart, for that matter, I suppose, except you might not be able to go fast enough. You could drive on sidewalks and so forth. So that would, that would be okay. Plenty of communities, you know, if you've ever been to Palm Springs, Desert Hot Springs, Rancho Mirage, it's just chock full of golf carts, Florida, Texas, other communities here in the, in the Colorado area. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about the, the safety issue involving this. What I do have a question about, though, is the cost of having your own golf cart. So if I could ask our golf manager about that.
What's the question? How much does it cost to buy a private golf cart?
No.
Sorry.
To use your golf cart on the course.
Oh, what's the fee right now?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's $17.
Plus tax. It comes to $18.50 with tax.
Right. Which is very low for the region. When I was calling around about golf cart courses, there were many courses that were $30 and more. So let's say it's 18 flat, 17, 18, as the, as the slide presentation shows. I don't particularly see a reason to give someone with a golf cart a reduction. I think it should be the same price. I think it should be the same price that everybody is charged. Some of the golf courses I talked to did do that. They, they considered it a privilege to be able to bring your golf cart on. You make plans, you know, your budget depends on certain things that you are preparing for, in terms of the number of golf carts and that kind of thing that you have to have. So, you use the golf cart money to help offset some of those costs. So, having private golf carts on the course, I don't think should necessarily cost any money. Why did you decide to reduce it by $4?
So, just, one thing, my research supports your statement that the fee for a private golf cart at many facilities that allow private golf carts is in line with the exact same fee that somebody would pay who doesn't own a private golf cart and just comes out and rent one, rents one. I will say a point of fact on the municipal code.
Sure.
It states here that you can't operate a golf cart on a roadway that has a speed limit over 35 miles an hour. So, I believe that would be Chambers.
Chambers is how much?
I believe it's 45.
Okay. Well, nevertheless, there's a sidewalk you could, you could travel on.
Yeah. Well, that may be a question as well, but, okay.
And?
I can address all of them.
Carl, you need to put your microphone on?
No, I need to.
Okay. So, Chad and I spent a great deal of time with this. Councilmember Kim, this presentation was much longer than this. It was pared down because unfortunately, Chad couldn't make it today, so he was prepared to answer all of these questions for you. So, quickly, the fee structure, Councilmember Noble, was, so I did some research based on the numbers that I was given, and it turned out that the cost to, or the profit to the course for each golf cart that was rented was $13. That's how we came up with a $13 offset. So, no trail fees, no nothing, just charge the people $13, which is a direct 100% offset to the cost of, so that would be 100% cost of recuperation right now. As you know, the golf course is trying to operate under an 80% cost. So, that would actually be more than the 80%. So, that's how we came up with a $13 figure for that. We came up with some ideas on all of your talking points. So, the suggestion that Chad was going to make to you was that you could initially take out the wording for one mile from the golf course and bound the area by 120th to the north, Tower to the east, Chambers to the west, and 104th to the south. So, that box would become preliminarily the test area, if you will, for golf carts. 112th doesn't need to be used to get onto the course. There are six entrance points from the other communities. So, the people in those communities within that box, 120th, 104th, Chambers and Tower, could get on the golf course. The other points of entry between three and, two and three, between four and five, et cetera, with a new path between six and seven, on the south side, between 11 and 12, et cetera, et cetera. So, there are other places to get onto the course. We don't need 112th. So, the suggestion that Chad was going to make to you was either make an exemption in the code to allow golf carts to travel in the bike lanes on 112th and keep the speed limit 40 miles an hour, or reduce the speed limit to 35 miles an hour, which then opens up that entire road to golf carts. Chad was also going to suggest to you that that would be between Parkside Drive to the east and Chambers, so 112th between Chambers on the west and Parkside Drive on the east, which gives you access. I think I addressed your concerns. If I missed anything, please ask. Mayor Protonal, did I address your issues?
Yes, and I still would like to see it the same price as what everyone else pays. No benefits.
We're having a discussion on fees at the Parks Recreation and Golf Advisory Committee.
And so is the city council right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. I think there's a couple of different issues here for me. Number one, I think it would be great if I lived in a golf course community, I owned my own cart, to be able to drive to the golf course. The golf course is saving some money on having to have a golf cart for me if I have my own. It comes down to respect, respecting those around you, respecting things. And I just recently talked to my best friend from high school, moved to Florida, and he lives in a golf course community. He said, hey, I sold my car. I don't need a car anymore. My wife has one if we need to go out outside of our community. I drive my golf court, my golf cart everywhere. I go to the store, I go, I go get my groceries, I, we go out to dinner, everything on my golf cart. He said, it's, it's awesome. I'm saving a lot of money. And I think that's good. And I think it's good if we had a scenario where you could have, drive your golf cart in the community and, and save a little money at the golf course, whatever. I don't, I'm not opposed to any of that. But on the other side of that, there are golf carts in every single community in Commerce City. They're driving all the time, all over. I live in River Run. It is regularly that I see golf carts flying down Peoria Street, going to 7-Eleven off of Peoria and 120th, and usually, it's a bunch of kids. And they're driving recklessly. There's eight or nine kids piled onto this thing where they shouldn't be. And I have to be able to explain to some residents why they can and some residents why they can't. I think it comes down to being able to enforce our laws. Right now, we're getting hammered with people driving four-wheelers and, and mini bikes and go-karts. I mean, it's, we're inundated with, with getting hammered with that, and we can't get control of just the misuse of motorized vehicles in parts of our community. Halloween comes around. There's as many golf carts in my neighborhood as there is cars. It's, it's crazy to see, but you know, do I care? Not if they're being respectful of the other people that are in the area. It's, it's the ones that are, are driving recklessly, kids, you know, 12 and 13 years old, you know, going, driving down main streets in our town. And, and so what I'm looking for is, yeah, I want those people that live near the golf course to be able to benefit from being able, because you like golf. Why shouldn't you have your own golf cart? Why shouldn't you be able to use it? I think, for me, we got to work through some of the issues with the, the golf course from how they're used on the golf course. And there's bad actors in, in every scenario. I mean, we have four-wheelers going down Highway 2 at high rates of speed. And so, from a practical perspective, I'd just like to, to know how I get by as an elected official to say, yeah, you can, you can drive a golf cart in the community, but then when one of these kids get hurt because they're off running around, how do I explain to them why they couldn't be? You know, I, so we need a clear set of regulations, not just, oh, yeah, golf carts are allowed if you're under 35 miles an hour, what have you. I think you have to be a certain age. I, I think you have to have safety components, lights and blinkers and everything else, like it said, and you have to stay off the main streets. But I think it has to be publicized, and we have to let people know, this is what's acceptable, this is not. But then we're going to get hammered by, we have a lady that comes every Monday night and complains about four-wheelers and go-karts and everything else, and I don't blame her. She has a right to complain about those things. But how do I explain to her some of these things are okay, and some of these things are not okay? I'm, I'm looking for a reasonable, I'm, I'm looking for a way to allow golf carts to be used at the golf course and in the neighborhoods. I'm also looking for a reason to make sure that it's limited to who can drive those golf carts, when and, and time of day, and how old. Because we're getting, we're getting hit on both sides. If I, if I owned a golf cart and I was in a golf community, of course I would. And you know what? I'd want to just, you know, hey, nobody's around, it's, it's middle of the day, traffic's slow, I'm going to drive them and get my prescription at, at King Supers. That's what I would be tempted with, you know? Hey, I can just buzz up the sidewalk on Chambers and cut across, and not a big deal. So, it becomes a big deal. You know, my dad has a golf cart. That's how he gets around. 87 years old, that's how he gets around his own yard, is driving around in a golf cart. My son has one. We shoot competitive sporting clay events. Doesn't matter where in the state we go. Matter of fact, this last weekend, we were at Colorado Clay's, state-owned facility, and everybody trailers their personal golf carts up there. We unload them, we drive the course. You can rent a golf cart, or you can take your own and have it modified the way you want with your own gun racks and everything else, and, and you drive the course. And it's a respect thing, you know? Sure, you're going to get in trouble over there if you're doing something wrong. It's hard to get in trouble when you're doing something wrong on the street because everybody sees it except the cop, because the cop wasn't there at that time. And so, we get hammered. But there is no additional fee when you go to a state gun range and use a private golf cart. There is no additional fee. And I like the fact that you, we have those allowances in our city and in, in our, in our state and country. But where do you, how do you separate the wheat from the chaff? You know, and, and that's what I want to get to. I want the people in the golfing community to be able to drive a golf cart over there, drive down the golf path, you know? Do I want them to take noxious sticker plants that are maybe stickers in their, in their tires that are going to get on the course, or, or do damage on the course, or be fast because they're souped up and cause problems? No. But I want them to have a respectful means to be able to use their golf cart that they purchased. I don't want the kids driving down main streets, going to 7-Eleven, and somebody getting hurt. So, I'm looking for a balance. I don't know where that balance is. But, you know, people drive tractors on the road, too. They're not licensed, you know, there's, but they have to get from one place to another. It, it all comes down to how you act in public. And if you act with respect and, and you prove the, the ability to be able to function with those, that kind of equipment in a public setting, I'm fine with it. But it's the ones who do bad that create the problems. We, we never were a golf course community. Now, we have a golf course, and we're trying to sort some of this out. So, I'm looking for direction and help from our staff at what we can and can't do, why, why we should be allowed to have golf carts on the course, and why we shouldn't be allowed. And when it comes to a cost perspective, I think, as long as the golf course, golf course is covering the impact of having those private golf carts, that's what would matter to me. Otherwise, you know, we're, you're not harming the city by having a public, a private golf cart on the course unless, unless it's creating some damage. And that, I'm, I'm looking for, for some staff direction, but I really think we have a two-pronged thing. We have the golf course thing, we can get by that. It's everybody else that sees, that sees this happening, and they're going, hey, guess what? We just found out we can drive our golf carts on the streets. And then we turn into having another problem because it ends up right here in this room on Monday nights. And, and if you ever watch and pay attention, it, it is an array of things that are causing people problems in our community. So, it's a, it's a respect thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. City Attorney Zara Zeki.
I was just going to clarify, I think, great points, Councilmember Ford. So, per the Model Traffic Code amendments that we have already on the books, there is some language that clarifies that you have to have a driver's license to be able to operate a golf cart. So, that is already in there. Moreover, there's a provision that says that golf cart operations cannot take place on trails or sidewalks unless they're specifically designated. So, basically, you know, narrowing the scope of where these, these would be operated, you'd have, you'd have to have a driver's license, could only be on roads that are not excess of, what was it, 35 miles an hour? Cannot be on sidewalks, cannot be on trails. And then I believe the way that Parks Recreation Golf regulates golf cart usage at the golf course now is you have to be 18 years old and, and have a driver's license. So, we could implement the same requirements for personally-owned golf carts that are being brought to the golf course.
City Manager Rogers, did you?
Yeah, I'll weigh in from the, from the philosophical for your Councilmember Ford. You know, operationally, Paul will kick me or he'll throw a golf club at me if I, if I overspeak. But, right, operationally speaking, just at the golf course, he's got a real good handle. He can kind of speak to what shift, whether it's landscape shift change or, or minor. But think it, thinking about it broadly about golf carts in the main, and what changes that you would have to make in order to accommodate, right, access to the golf cart, there's going to be some trickle-down effects that other, other departments are going to have to deal with outside of PRG. Whether it's Public Works, thinking about public safety measures, we're thinking about crossings because we're now introducing another, another use onto our roadway that right now, as we've talked about, if it's over, if it's, if it's a roadway over 40, it's another, it's another consideration, right? That's, that's something PW is going to have to take into account, is going to have to factor in as a variable that doesn't exist legally, but now does. Same thing with PD, which, to your point, I think you had shared to some great lengths as you were going through your, your thoughts. I think, all of that to say, I can't put a thumb on whether that's going to be significant and significant, but it's going to be a change. And with change, there are going to be the things that are going to be concerns with our community that we will have to respond to. We will have to make adjustments, and some of those adjustments will have a financial impact because we'll have to provide more resources to address that above and beyond what we're already addressing. Like I said, I can't put a specific number to that, but there will be an impact, though. There's also going to be a quality of life impact because, right, it's going to be a broader application of, of something that is going to be a nuisance to some but a benefit to others. So, there's a lot of ways of how you can look at it, but it's going to be one of those that we would have to deal with at the time of which that decision is made based on some policy leadership and guidance about, you know, what's the desired outcome that the body wants to take for the people of the community that use this facility, and does it outweigh the bigger picture for those in the broader community that do not? Or does it?
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes.
Thank you. I wanted to, a couple of things. I have a point of clarification. I want to share my thoughts on this plan and then share like an alternative to think about, like, as we think through next steps. The point of clarification, and it was mentioned earlier about a light on 117th and Chambers being approved, and my understanding was that, City Manager, we approved you to look at the feasibility of what that could look like. Not a light yet, is that correct, or?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. So, just to clarify, there's not a light approved yet. It's just how, what does that look like based on feedback from our conversation with Chambers widening? And City Manager hasn't presented what the solution could be yet. So, that's still up in the air for this discussion. Just share a couple of thoughts, and before I do that, thank you all. Being on the PRG, it's been an amazing experience, and I know this conversation has really evolved over the last several months, and thank you for your leadership, and even staying late on Tuesday to talk through it and taking your time to be thoughtful about it. So, I, I truly appreciate it. As far as this, this plan and the thoughts here, I try to be consistent. My big thing is safety, cost, and then thinking about priorities for paying for this in cost and safety. As far as safety, I would love to, I think there's more work that we need to have done in terms of what does that really look like if we were to have this plan in action? So, safety, meaning like the crossings, as you mentioned, just be more detail around what that could look like, and ensuring that there's not going to be any, any major issues. So, talking through some of the potential scenarios on, on some of the issues. Because I mentioned, you mentioned, Carl, the Jasper Roundabout. Like, I would love to know, how do we solve that, which you did talk about the different pathway through that, and just more detailed discussion on what that's, what's the feasibility of that? Because the next part is the cost. I think that to have more safety measures is going to cost us more as a city, whether it's the gates, whether it's the crossing 120th with Uh, whether it's the gates, whether it's the crossing 120th with, which is estimated at, um, 30,000 or so. And then I think about the signs, like what does it look like to have signs? Even if we do share the roads with bike lanes, I would want more signs to show, you know, like, um, street signs to say, this is in conjunction with, you know, bicyclists, like in other communities have, right? Um, so those would be a cost. I'll be curious to know what's the true cost to implement the gates, add more signage, develop an education plan? And develop more awareness as a whole initiative? If you choose, if you guys choose to go forward with this idea. And then a rationale or justification around, um, because I would just ballpark and it's going to cost at least 60,000. Um, in terms of gates, crossings, signs, um, uh, s- street lights, things like that. It's going to cost money, right? And I'm ballparking 6,000 based on a 30,000, but I would want to know true costs at some point during this process. Because I would want to have to justify it between essentially it'll be folks in a small area based on the city, right? Um, and so we have to be able to say, we're going to spend X amount of dollars in this area. Where we could spend that money elsewhere or people perceive we could spend, spend it elsewhere. So I want to know the costs before making any decision, like true costs of that. The other piece that's became clear tonight is that like, I do live in a neighborhood, I think everyone knows that. And, um, when I moved into my neighborhood, I didn't think about it as a golf community. I thought about it as a house, they had enough space, a basement for my older daughter so she can hang out with her twins or hang out with her, her friends and all that stuff. And so, um, I wonder when you do another survey, what are other non-golf residents? And I, I happen to golf, I like golfing, it's not an issue for me. But having it coined as a golfing community, uh, I personally didn't move in a community for golf. And I do wonder and concern how many other residents have the same idea that are non-golfers. Um, because it does create a ripple effect, right? Which we can manage through and think through it. But I'll be curious on what their perception of it is as well. Um, because there is, you know, there's bus stops, there's a lot of kids biking. And there are younger kids figuring out how to ride their bikes around the neighborhood on streets and stuff like that. So just want to get their thoughts on that in addition to the, the golfers, because, um, I think that matters. The other piece is just priorities, as we talked about costs and, uh, we have a CIP list that's, that's three years in, in, in the making right now, right? So we already have a lot on our plate to sell. How do we shift costs if it's in our unassigned balance? That's something we have to justify. The last piece suggests that the parking, so this is again, my ideas on this current plan. The way it's currently set up in those neighborhoods that I live in is that, um, there's not a, they, they, um, locale didn't build three car garages for everyone. It was an extra add-on and so some people have three cars, some don't. Over up the street by Buffalo Drive, most of folks have three car garages. Um, the, the, um, garages where we live are extremely small. So it's hard for a lot of people to put two cars in in general. And so I wonder out of all those folks who are going to buy new golf carts. Maybe it's not a lot, maybe it's little, but I'll be curious around where they're going to park them. Um, so if they park them on the street, if they park them in their driveway, I'll be, I want to know like some anecdotal data, right? What does that look like? Because parking is already tight in that whole community because the garages are really small already, right? Um, so that's one thing, or that's the last thing on that part of it. But I do want to, um, pitch another idea, which was from a neighbor who's an avid, avid golfer around the corner from me. And they came from Nebraska and they, they're typically used to private golf carts on the golf course. And something he said is like in Nebraska, uh, and where they come from, they actually have the option to park, buy their golf, private golf cart? And park it on the golf course and store it there for the season. And what that, what they do is in the process, they have like, I liken it to like a, a college dorm, check in and checkout for students. They have specific days of the year where they tailor the trailer and put their golf carts on storage on the golf, um, the golf course. Um, in an organized storage place that's secure and things of nature. And then they pay a rental fee. They say, we're going to rent it here, we're going to store it here. Here's the fee that we cost to pay to store it. Um, and we can use it, keep it there during the season so that they can show up to the, to the golf house, right? Get have a guarantee, so you have a staff pull it up, you know, just like normal when you do your tee time. And then they can use their golf cart, court, cart on the course. And that solves a problem with some of the roadways and things of that nature. But what we'll have to think about is how much would it cost to have a secure location, whether it's a fence? And I think it may be probably a lot less if you have the fencing, a place to store them. And then, um, we charge residents to store it, like, so that's income coming in. So that's an alternative idea if we can't find a way to get them from point A to point B. And it's also another idea that maybe expands it to more folks beyond this radius. Where if you feel, and from my understanding, I haven't, um, put one on the trailer before, but they said it's pretty easy to rent a U-Haul trailer and put your golf cart on there. And if we have designated times of the year to do it, you can easily set it up pretty, pretty easily. Um, but I, I put that out there as an alternative, um, for now, that could mirror as a, as a, a bridge into seeing like, what are other ways to look at this current plan? But I wanted to throw it out there to you, Paul, if you heard about that or Carl, I know if you, if you heard about that idea before.
Yes, Chad and I talked about that too.
I did, okay, what did, what did you guys say?
Well, we didn't know how many people there were. We anecdotally heard that there were three people that might want to do that. So does it justify the cost of building a building specifically for the golf carts? There's no more room, according to Chad, I think Paul can back me up on this, in the current, uh, cart barn for any personal gar, carts. Uh, so there's a potential, I suppose, that there's a portage in the back that could be, uh, extended a little bit. Uh, so, so there are some options, but it would require a greater upfront cost with an uncertainty of how many people will ultimately use this space.
Yeah, and, and I wanted to put it out there as an alternative, um, because I love the idea. I think it's a great idea to try to meet folks where they're at when they want to golf. And so if you're able to have your own thing stored, own golf cart stored, you are able to address the need, like your, you want to use your private golf cart. I think in the wording of the survey, it said, would you like to tailor it in trailer, put it on trailer? And my understanding it was like, every time I go golfing, I like put it on trailer and, and take it off. But that seems inconvenient, but I think if it was worded differently, like if you have a private golf cart and you want to store it for your seasons. We have a space for you at a low fee, right? Um, I'll be curious if we can explore that as a, as an alternative.
Thank you. Councilmember Douglas?
Well, sorry, Paul was going to answer that, go ahead, Paul.
No, thank you, thank you for that insight. That's a creative idea for sure. Just like a lot of things, every solution creates problems, but you know, that's a very creative idea.
Councilmember Douglas?
Actually, I have Councilmember Chacon on the speaker since our Zoom is out tonight. And I believe that, uh, and if, if it doesn't work with the, uh, speaker to the mic, then I have a text question from her or comment. So, Councilmember Chacon, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can everybody hear? Yes, they can.
Oh, sweet, okay. Um, so I've just been listening in and then I followed the presentation as well. Um, honestly, I'm not against golf carts. My concern is that we don't have the pedestrian infrastructure with all the traffic, frankly. And my con, biggest concern is that we're going to add more of a pedestrian traffic flow in spaces that can't handle it. We still have semis going through these spaces. We don't have crosswalks that are effective yet or real, um, traffic calming measures. And I think we should consider if we're really wanting to be a golf cart type of community, that means that it also might mean pedestrian bridges where there isn't any other traffic. But pedestrians like golf carts going through and we should treat it that way. I've seen Denver kind of, um, have more spaces where it's specifically for bikes and things like that around Capitol Hill and other spaces. Just because we have to assume, I will, I appreciate that, yes, I would love for community to be respectful. But we have to assume that we are going to get people that might drink and drive in their golf cart. Um, treat it like an ATV and yes, go to gas stations or local spaces because they just simply don't want to walk or use their car. So I do agree with it having certain levels of regulation and enforcement, whether that's fines or fees or completely the inability to be a part of that. But I think we also have to look at the larger picture of what does that really mean to have more traffic flow with pedestrians? And the liability of what that looks like if we don't kind of build out a better infrastructure within our community to be a golf cart space? Because we're transitioning from yes, an agricultural and, and commercial space to completely this, without kind of that jump. And I always get concerned because these are high speeds. A lot of, a lot of community are already trying to go across, especially around 112th. I see still a lot of youth be afraid just to walk across where I live. So I'm, I'm really trying to be mindful that we're not flowing a bunch of traffic where there's still pretty high speeds.
Thank you. Do you want me to like respond to that?
Um, no, I just wanted to say thank you all for giving us the opportunity to come back and to discuss this again. I think the, again, when we first were discussing this, we were thinking about all of these different issues and concerns. And as a committee, we were like, that's a lot and maybe this is not the best way to go about it. But asking us to come back and re-review it, I just wanted to be, to make sure that it's not lost. That we will be retrofitting a community into a golf community, which is different than when a community is set up as a golf community to begin with. And then there's, there's access. So knowing that that's what we're, that's the, 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 the direction that we're trying to get to. I appreciate all the comments and the thoughtfulness behind all of the questions and the concerns, because those are a lot of the concerns that we have. But again, they're not so overwhelming that they cannot be overcome. We just need more time. And with whatever the council decides to do, I just want you to make sure you give us some direction so that we can go to the next level. If there is something that you want us to do, um, in order to get us to that point. So, um, I appreciate you guys, um, taking the time to listen.
Sure, appreciate that. I'm going to weigh in here before we go to the second round. You know, a lot, a lot has been said. I was on the, the PRG years ago, by the time of 2018, 2011, 2019. We talked about golf courts as well. We moved up to this community. It was, it was, uh, talked about that this is a, a, going to be a golfing community. And then the air is built around it, were built around the golf course with the think, with the thinking in the future of allowing golf carts. But it never got to that point. And here we are right now. So I think for me, I would, I wouldn't want it or, um, because we talked about that time, expanding the maintenance garage or even the, the, uh, where they house the golf carts now. Um, some areas have them where they, they can stack them up, they raise them up, you put a cart underneath. But then that's a lot in the city. And that's a lot. So to me, uh, as far as having a golf court, because I see them right now in the neighborhood, people drive around. Uh, when King's Uber's opened up 2012, people were actually driving those electric six-seater vehicles down to King's Uber's to go shop. So I, I see it all the time. I see people ride the carts all the time within the neighborhoods. Uh, some, some have drinks and they're just driving around drinking and all that stuff. And, uh, I won't say who used to work here, but they have one now and drive one neighborhood as well. But they're safe about it. And I would like to see, um, that there is limitation as far as where these carts can go. I know there was an opening. My, my, my concern is, is the direction of these carts coming down. Because you start hole one, you're, and you're traveling north, you don't travel south until you come up around to hole six, seven, eight, nine, come back to the clubhouse. So these other, these other directions of entry, actually, some flow in that direction and some don't. Some are, 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 um, off counter. So you're going to have people fl- coming down to safety concern, yes, you put your windshield up, things like that, right? Uh, but then signing away and all those, I, I would. I would be cautious of just starting out slow and just, and just, and, and, um, boundary would just be a certain portion, just like said before. 120th to 100, 104th, um, Chambers, until these other, until other improvements are made, those other cars then would not be allowed to cross Chambers. 112th, I know that bike lane there is, it's a wide bike lane that, that could be used for carts to come down. I don't believe carts should be on sidewalks. Because we have people who use the sidewalks all, where they're just disabled in, in a wheelchair. People are using those, those sidewalks and I don't think any motor vehicle should be allowed on those sidewalks. And then when it comes to other vehicles, this weekend I saw three kids just having a good time with helmets on, riding what looks like electric dirt bikes. And they were just cruising through the neighborhood. And, you know, that's, that's an issue. So I, I do like what you guys are, are presenting. Uh, we can just kind of, just slow it down and just maybe a little pilot program to see exactly for those who have it. I mean, if you have a cart, you're going to put in the garage, you're going to, you're not going to park it in the street. I've never seen anybody, it's just, you know, because they're electric, you don't, you don't charge them, charge them up. And some of those do have the capacity for so many miles that you can ride those vehicles. So the further out you are, the, less likely you're going to have a, a, a good day to drive around your cart going around. So that's another issue too, is you come to the, to the golf course and your battery has to be a certain capacity. You, you, you know, so to that degree, um, this is futile. So on those carts, what is the range as far as the miles or distance from those batteries charged up?
Well, it, it kind of degrades as the years go by, but when they're brand new, they should go three rounds in a day.
Okay.
Um, we've seen them go two rounds, so 36 holes, no problem.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You know, several people have mentioned this idea that, hey, they see golf carts and motorbikes driving up and down the streets in different manners. I, without going into too much detail, I will say that we see some of that on the golf course.
Yeah.
You know, and, and to the point that was made earlier, it's extremely difficult to regulate that kind of thing. Um, so, you know, would, would this increase the number of, of those kinds of incidents? Probably. Um, but, you know, it's, it's everywhere. It's on the streets, it's on the golf course, you know? Ju- just because you put a rule in place, doesn't mean people follow it, as we all know.
Right.
You know, and, you know, the same with the flow on the chart, you know? You can tell people, well, this is the only way you can travel, whether or not they follow that. To Councilmember Ford's comments earlier, it's about respect and.
Sure.
Some people play nicely and some people.
Right. Because there are, there are points on the golf course I know where the maintenance cuts through, so they're going the, the right direction. So some of those things could be implemented. I mean, we don't have, we don't have all the answers right now and, but I do like the direction we're going. So we need to work some kinks out. Like I said, if I, I would, uh, be all right to do a pilot program and just put restrictions around there. I mean, you had to be your, of course, a resident of Commerce City, you had to live within a certain distance. Not allow trailers to come to the parking lot, it's a tight parking lot. You're driving through there, it's, you know, also you got a trailer and all that stuff. And yes, there's expanded parking, um, to the west of the property and all that. But yeah, this is just, would be folks just, you know, in, within the neighborhood. I think, I think it should, we just kind of keep it low, uh, a low key. So, all right, Mayor Phil Ten Noble, and then Councilmember Kim and Councilmember Dukes.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Douglas?
Yeah, I'm sorry I didn't get, uh, to stay on after Councilmember Chacon, uh, got on. Uh, I just have a couple of very simple questions. What's the maximum speed that a golf cart can go?
It varies. If you're talking about the ones that we rent at Buffalo Run, they typically go between 15 and 20, depending on what the charge is on them. But private golf carts can go much faster. We've actually had some ins, at, at least one incident where a private golf cart went on the golf course unauthorized. And when we tried to catch up with them, we couldn't. Now that's an isolated incident, I'm not saying that happens regularly, but you know, probably they can, they can go fast, some can go fast and some slow.
So the private ones can go faster? And, uh, are, are most of them gas or, I'm sorry?
I just want to address that. So the private golf carts these days have a switch on them, uh, to go 25 miles an hour on the street. And then when you're on the golf course, it throttles it back to believe it or not, 12 miles an hour. Uh, the current golf carts go right at 15 to 16, which is why in the proposed. carts go right at fifteen to sixteen, which is why in the proposal, uh, and this goes to your signage, uh, the cost for the signage, I think Chad came up with about forty-three-hundred bucks for. And that would include signs that say, you know, you're, if you're doing this, it's your responsibility, et cetera, et cetera. And the speed limit is fifteen miles an hour. And there were also some provisions in the suggestions about the golf cart staff being able to revoke the right, uh, for people to do, to use their carts if they weren't abiding by the rules. There was also, which you may not have seen, a twenty-dollar annual inspection fee. Uh, the man that comes out, my understanding, talking to Chad and Paul can confirm, is that he comes out about every two weeks. So there are many windows when people can bring their cart, uh, if they're coming to maybe eat lunch or dinner, uh, lunch, and then they can coordinate that with a maintenance guy so that he can take a look at the carts, uh, and then either tell staff or issue a sticker. So that was also something that was talked about. Sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to give you-
Oh, no, that's, uh, thank you so much for that, though, Mr. Zimmerman. Um, so you said the private ones go twenty-five on the street and then they switch to a lower speed? And I didn't catch that speed for the, for the course.
I was told it was twelve miles an hour. Now, something else to keep in mind, so their older golf carts had lead acid batteries and they couldn't really go more than fifteen to eighteen miles an hour. So we're talking about the newer golf carts with newer control systems with lithium batteries. So this is like post twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two golf carts. So the older golf carts, they, they, they just can't go faster than the current fleet carts that we have because of the limitations of the batteries.
And are, most of them are electric, correct?
That, that was another stipulation is that all of the golf carts, private golf carts and personalized motorized vehicles be electric only. That's also in the list of-
So when they would check in to, to be on the course, is there any possibility that there would be like a checklist of things to make sure that they meet our, our code of being able to be on the street with the, with the windshield and everything else before they would be allowed on the course?
So I can answer that. Some of the research that I've done with other facilities throughout the state that have implemented the use of private golf carts, they do require an inspection. Both a safety inspection, which typically is done by golf maintenance staff for things like brakes, steering, tire pressure, et cetera. And one of the golf courses that I talked to, I believe is at Grand Junction, had a separate, uh, registration sticker that was provided by the police department. So, because they have a whole list of, to your point, does it have brake lights? Does it have turn signals? Does it have a windshield? All that kind of stuff. So different jurisdictions do things differently, but certainly some kind of safety inspection and registration would make sense, I would think.
And typically, these don't go as fast as like the ATV's that we're seeing a lot of the kids on, especially in the neighborhoods. These, these are slower vehicles, aren't they?
Again, private golf carts can go different speeds.
Okay. All right. And then my last question is, do you intend to have this addressed as part of the parks and rec golf master plan that's coming up?
Well, the master plan, I believe, is completed.
Oh, it is completed. Okay.
Yeah, the, the master pan, plan is complete, but the way that the master plan is written is it gives the city, um, and PRG an opportunity to make improvements that better
Says living document.
For everyone. And this would kind of fall underneath that. So I think it's already kind of included.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for all the answers to my questions.
All right. Before we go forward here on the second round, you have three minutes. And I want you to also be clear if you, if you want this to go forward, you need more information, so to come back, or you're good not letting it go forward. Mayor Proton Noble?
I think that some of the conversation has gotten a little off track. And so focusing this would be helpful. First of all, is doing this on a golf course, having private golf carts on, on the golf course, okay? We have to have that part settled. And then how to get them there is another issue. We have to make sure they're safe. I need to, I need to just repeat this, that we already have, as Mr. Zarzaki pointed out, section eleven, twelve oh two of the city code that allows golf carts in Ward one, Ward two, Ward three, Ward four. They're able to do all the things that we have already talked about in terms of not exceeding, not being on roads that are at a certain speed limit, not exceeding certain speeds. And there was a question about bicycle lanes. It makes reference to that too. Where a bicycle lane or paved shoulder suitable for bicycle riding is present, persons operating golf carts or low-speed vehicles shall drive in the bicycle lane or paved shoulder. These provisions apply, except in certain situations. Um, so this has all been approved by city councils in the past. We have a way to get golf carts on the road to the golf course, but there will be certain roads that they will be prevented from using. So I would say, first of all, um, yes, I think it's a great idea to have the golf carts. I would still like to see them not have, uh, any special privilege when it comes to price or that kind of thing. I want it to be equal. Everybody needs to be equal on this thing. The privilege is that you get to have a, your own golf cart on the course. That is a privilege unto itself. Um, and then, secondly, we could, I think it probably makes sense to have a test area for this. But at the same time, no matter where you live in Commerce City, you can drive your golf cart to, um, Buffalo Run Golf Course right now. You could do that right now if you wanted to, if you pick the right roads. You just, you know, we need to keep that in mind. There's nothing preventing that right now. And I'm not sure what people are talking about when, when we're having that discussion. And then the final thing is, I, I need to go back to, um, what my colleague said about a hundred and seventeenth, and, uh, that also includes Heartland. I was a person who made the motion. So I'm gonna go back and listen to the tape because there is, there are no minutes in Legislaw right now. So I'll go back and, um, and take another listen to it. But that was quite clearly the, um, intention when we had the Ninety-Six Avenue widening meeting. Hundred seventeenth is not part of the widening, but it was a road we wanted to, uh, provide a traffic light for.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Kim. Now, same thing. Are you for this? And then if you want to bring it back with, with more concerns to be addressed?
I have, I have more concerns. So first and foremost, we know that, uh, golf carts are roughly, they go between twelve and fifteen miles per hour, um, while some can travel up to twenty-five miles per hour. Now, if you want to put some NOS and aluminum siding on that sucker, and you know, maybe you can try fifty-five and you're good to go. Hundred and fourth and hundred and, hundred and fourth is forty-five mile per hour speed limit. Hundred and twelfth is forty miles per hour speed limit. Hundred and twentieth is forty-five. Chambers Road is forty. Um, similar to regular bikes and bike lanes, right? I myself am a cyclist. I myself have ridden down on Highway Two, right? They, they can go, I forgot what the speed limit was, but, um, they could go down that road. And I still get zoomed by or potentially some people would want to go to try to scare me off. So while I do understand that there is a, a section where you can actually go on the path, there's also a bike lane as well. My, my biggest concern is regarding safety. Safety regardless if you have a golf cart or not, um, to put out there, to allow people from other neighborhoods to go to the golf court, golf, golf course with their private golf cart, um, I, I would want to get that addressed first. I think the incentive piece, as far as when it comes to, um, you know, allowing people to come on the course with their own private golf cart, I think it makes sense to me to say we decrease that price because that is an incentive. You have your own vehi- you have your, that's your own benefit, your own vehicle. So why not? I mean, it makes sense for, um, like, for example, like a military discount, right? I mean, you, you ask for it, you typically would get it, right? Um, I also think about, um, what City Manager Rogers had said earlier, which was, maybe we look at, you know, we now allow, correct me if I'm wrong, we do not allow private golf carts on the golf course currently, right? So maybe that is a point of, an option to say we open that up, incentivize, but guess what? We are still working through the safety concerns. So we need to work that out first before we say, hey, you want to drive your golf cart to the golf course from Ward one? I personally would not. I personally would not. But I think we need to address that for, address that. So in the meantime, we provide the incentive. We allow golf, private golf carts to, to be used on the golf course. Um, and in addition to that, I think the, um, I, I would rather, I would, I would prefer that we address those things first before we actually allow people to ride their golf carts on the roads. Again, fastest you can go in a golf cart unless you modify it, soup it up, whatever the case is, is twenty-five on average, is I think what I'm, what I read, um, through the Colorado State. So, or one of the several websites. So anyways, just, that's my-
So are you in support for this going forward with more information?
More information, but I would also say that also, oh, that was my point. In addition to that, if you're gonna allow golf carts to go in there from the neighborhoods and there needs to be signage that says, pointing to the golf course from neighborhoods, not from the major thoroughfares, but to kind of just be able to point to where it, the golf course is and which routes you can take within the neighborhoods. Because typically neighborhoods are like fifteen, maybe no more than twenty miles per hour, right? That makes sense. But on the major roadways, no. Um, so I think there needs to be more information that. I think the option to be able to allow private golf carts and incentivizing that should be another option, uh, should, should be allowed. We start there, start small in a phase so that we can still continue. I think PRG can still continue looking at those other challenges that still are out there.
Yeah, thank you. So before I, I go to Councilmember Dukes for the first time, uh, Councilmember Teeter?
Yeah, I, I just think it's too dangerous on all those major thoroughfares, uh, Chambers and Hundred and Twentieth and Hundred and Twelfth. And it, uh, if it's local in the neighborhood where they could go in the back way, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that. Or trailer in it over to, uh, Buffalo Run. But, uh, and then if, if you trailer it over there, it, well, once they get on there, well, now the, they don't have to go by the rules because there's no GPS. If they want to go out of bounds, there's, there's nobody there to catch them. Not saying that Carl would do that, but, but, uh, that, that, that would be a problem, but, uh-
Carl, did you want to address this GPS?
Well, so that's called geofencing. Our, our current fleet does not have any geofencing. Uh, so the carts that are, I mean, they could potentially take the carts off on the streets and, and keep on driving if they wanted to.
Oh, I thought I had a cart one time that kept on quitting on me and I thought it was because I was out of bounds.
Not, not, not our fleet. But there are lots of courses that do, you pay roughly, for the size of our fleet, it's between seventeen and thirty thousand dollars to geofence them. So to keep them from, I mean, you can, you know, tick a switch and then they can't drive off the car pass. You can tick another switch and slow them down before they cross intersections. You know, the more advanced you want your programming, the more you pay. And it's a lease. Uh, so that's an add. That's not an upfront cost or that's not a one-time cost. It's an annual, uh, fee to geofence carts.
And did we ever figure out what happened to Elway's buddy that got killed on the golf cart?
I, I, I heard that he fell off the cart and hit his head. That's all I heard.
Okay. That's a, that's another issue. I, I think if you're in a golf cart, you should be strapped in there. And if you're gonna be on the roadway, because if a car comes up behind you and hits you, you're gonna get shot out of there like a pinball. So.
Thank you. Paul, did you want to address that question with the cart's GPS or anything?
If, if the question is, is there something that prevents a customer from taking one of the golf carts at Buffalo Run and simply driving down the street off the golf course? There's no geofencing currently that would prevent them, but I'm not sure that was the question.
No, no, I was, I was thinking that you had it set up to where if they went out of bounds on the golf course, that it would shut off?
No.
Oh, you don't have that? Okay.
No. So it's available. It's a-
I know it is. On other courses.
But no, that's not currently in place at Buffalo Run.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Dukes?
Thank you. So, um, as far as just clear direction for PRG, I, I do want to respect the, the motion that PRG had on vote and no on private golf carts based on this current plan. However, I would recommend PRG to look at a, an alternative plan that's more phase-in approach. By thinking about, um, what Councilmember Kim said around incentivize being able to have private golf carts on the golf course as his first step. And then looking at a plan to say, how do we, you, how do we have a space that you can actually tailor, trailer your carts in there? So we could do storage. Looking at those alternatives first, while continuing to have a discussion around some of the, the traffic, um, concerns getting to the golf car, the golf course itself. Um, because I think from tonight, you, you got a lot of, a lot of feedback, right? And so I wonder if, if it's worth pausing that, taking that feedback, um, looking at a, a small pilot. And I, I say pilot because if we say, I think there's some recommendations on starting small. I think that creates more of a, of a, of a challenge if you say we're gonna start small because you're gonna have the same traffic concerns. But I think if you were to think about how to get golf carts there without using the streets yet, maybe it's, like I said, the storage, reaching out to neighbors there, um, also incentivizing them if they want to bring their own carts there as, as an alternative. And then having another discussion around how do you address some of the other concerns regarding, um, getting golf carts to the golf course. Again, I think it's a good idea. Um, I think you have a lot of questions that you need to answer. And for me, it's the cost as well. So the signage, as you think about the cost. But that would be our recommendation for the PRG committee to think about. Accepting the current no, but then develop an alternative plan to meet golfers who have, who want private golf carts there and use them there. And if there's a different way to, to get them there. Hope that helps, makes sense.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you. Um, I don't, I don't think we need to recreate the, uh, the wheel here. There's a lot of municipal courses all over the country, including in Colorado. What courses are allowing private golf carts to utilize the course? What are their rules and regulations on doing so? So we have some ideas on what works and, and doesn't work. So that we're not trying to go from step one. Like I mentioned, um, my, my son and my father both have golf carts. My son put a new engine in his. It's gas. It'll run forty miles an hour. You wouldn't want it on our golf cars. You absolutely would not want it on the golf course. Um, so it comes down to, yeah, if it's, if it's a standard golf cart and it was intended to be just for golf cart type uses, great. But I have seen some people have private golf carts. Saw one up in Reunion. The guy keeps it in his garage. It has flames on the side of it. It has huge speakers in the back of it. Last thing I want to see is some, some, uh, hot rod golf cart out on the course, blaring music while, you know, and, and I can see there being problems created. It's how we deal with those problems that matter. And I, I think that we need to look at what some other courses are doing from a municipal standpoint, rather than a private golf, golf course standpoint, and who allows them, who doesn't, and why, why they do and why they don't. I think I need that information. But otherwise, I'm supportive of private carts to be able to utilize the golf course. I just need to know how to set the rules.
Thank you. Councilmember Teeter, you want a second round? No. Councilmember Douglas?
Thank you. So they're already allowed. So why not allow them on the, the golf course? Again, I think a pilot program so that we can work out the kinks and no incentives. Um, you know, if, if you're privileged enough to have a golf cart, you really don't need to be, have a, um, money incentive to be able to use it on the, the course. Um, my mom had two different husbands. Uh, the first one was a carpenter who only lived until he was forty-five. And she was never on the golf course, never even thought about golfing. Um, she married her second husband who was a doctor and she played in tournaments. And they had their own golf cart and they lived in a town where you could ride the, 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 uh, golf cart to and from your home and use it on the golf course, or you could keep it there. So, I mean, but they didn't need to be incentivized to, uh, have that golf cart or to, uh, So, I mean, but they didn't need to be incentivized to, uh, have that golf cart or to, uh, use it as a sub fit. So I'm not in favor of incentivizing.
Okay. All right. I'll put it out to Councilmember Chaconne to see if she responds. So waiting for that, um, I would say I'm all for going forward with finding, finding a right solution because looking at the survey, only, there's only, you know, 200 something people, um, very, very minimal that already have carts here. So, and I would not want to incentivize anyone who has a cart because we're taking on the liability to that person bringing their cart and causing, not causing havoc, but an issue. It's not our cart. We're not, we're, we're taking on, we're taking our responsibility and liability. So I would say those fees need to be higher when you, when you want a private cart. And that's just, just the way it is. Um, so that's, that's where I stand on that. But I'm off, I'm all for the program. I just think we need to have more restrictions, so. Let's see, let's see if, uh, Councilmember Chaconne responded here.
Do they want to turn this over to the city staff now?
So at this point, City Manager Rogers, just where we're at, is this something that, taking all what has gathered tonight, is this something to put it back into the, uh, city staff's hands or back to the PRG or a combination of both?
That's a, that's a very good question, Mayor, because I can honestly tell you, I am struggling to understand where the consensus of where the body falls for what to take back.
Well, so far I have five people who, who are okay moving forward and two say no. So, but need more information. So it's, that's what I'm asking. It's this, it's not a, it's not a clear direction. I mean, especially from what's given us today, a lot of, a lot of these questions have been answered through as far as right now, people can use carts. So that's golf carts on the road right now. So that's not an issue. But when it comes to the golf course, that's where we have issues because we don't have any policy right now governing golf carts to be on the course today. So we would have to get there. So I'm asking, is that something that goes back to the PRG and you guys come back, back to us?
So if I may reframe th- this question for, for you all as council so that, because obviously the PRG Advisory Council responds to the body. So where are you all asking the PRG advisory body to continue on behalf of council?
Well, it, it would seem like, in my point of view, especially what's been given to us, that the staff needs to, really you need to go back to staff so they can sort this out. Councilmember Dukes?
I do want to kind of jump in there and I actually would defer, I, I'd love to hear a PRG committee and as you're thinking through everything you heard today, I think this started with the PRG as a recommendation to have golf, private golf cart, carts on the course. And I would love to hear, based on what you're hearing today, is this something you want to continue to move forward with in different iterations or do you need time to process? My challenge is if we give it to staff, that's not where it originally came from. It came from the PRG, it came from Carl and the group to talk through it and there's a lot of discussions. So I'd love to hear what, where do you want to go from the community's standpoint?
Delilah?
Yes. Um, and I will also have, uh, the other members here chime in. What I think I heard, I, I know you want to hear where we would like to go, but what I, what I believe I heard is that we need to, um, implement a pilot to see how this works, specifically getting those communities that are closest to the golf course that don't have to cross major public wa- right of ways. And seeing how it works to allow those folks to bring their carts to the golf course. I think that's what I thought I heard. I also heard that there's a lot more that needs to happen on the safety side on those major thoroughfares. Um, all of those roads that are above 35 miles an hour, we, we need to take a step back and figure that out and figure out what, how that's going to work. But I think for, for me and what I thought I heard, and I think a direction that would be helpful is say, hey, guys, we are good with a pilot, go forth and develop a pilot with staff and then we'll bring it back and then we could talk about it. I think that's what I thought I heard, but I will let my, my other folks.
Come on, first of all, close it out. Closer.
I, I can tell you that there's, there are already enough people that we could create a pilot program, uh, with a combination of private carts and private motorized vehicles. Uh, there are six guys that I know of on the, on the Men's Golf Association that already have these private motorized vehicles and, uh, there are a handful more asked you if, if they bought them, if they would be allowed. So we probably have 10 to 12 that we could probably get on the course pretty quickly. Uh, we have at least, uh, two private carts that would like to be, uh, able to use their cart to play golf. Uh, and I know at least one other person who is waiting to buy a cart based on, or not based on, uh, what you guys decide. So that's potentially three that I know of. Based on the survey numbers though, it would suggest that there are a lot more than that. Um, I mean, I'm, we've, Chad and I have already talked about this, this thing about storing the vehicles and carts, uh, and the trailers in the overflow parking lot, uh, but we didn't pursue it in any great detail, uh, but that's certainly something that we can all talk about as a committee and see if we can come up with some ideas for you. Uh, I'm, I'm certainly happy to do that and willing to do that.
Thank you all. So I'll try to keep it, keep it quick since it's 7:53, but I'm, I, I echo what Delilah, my co-chair Delilah said, uh, we're hearing a lot of safety concerns. And when we had the, uh, committee meeting, safety, safety, safety. Um, looking at the city ordinances, no carts, uh, over 35 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour, and the carts themselves only go 24. That's a huge concern. Um, so from what I'm hearing, what I'm gathering is doing a test area. Maybe we take that one, that, that huge area we have now and drastically shrink it down to, uh, just a couple neighborhoods, even just a couple streets if we need to. Take that, work with staff, go over the city codes and try to get a test area and then bring something back in the next two months or whatever that timeframe, frame looks like. That's what I hear as well. Cause we really do need to address the, the safety concerns and obviously then there's the revenue as well.
Right. And, um, just to, Councilmember Chaconne had said, she, she didn't want any, want the carts to be incentivized. She says, honestly, I think we are, need to be more responsible for safety concerns. Also on the road with traffic, pedestrians like ATVs, they already have allowance, but it's, but concerning there are, there's, there's not more infrastructure focus. So to me, I would like to, I mean, from part of my hearing, like I said, there's, there's one, two, three, four, five yeses, um, two no's, but just have a, a, I'd say just a small pilot program, see how it work, work that with the, turn it over to the staff to see what they could do as well. Because we, we, the information you guys have gathered versus surveys and everything, it was, it was done very well. So I would say move the ball forward at, um, at a very small scope.
If I may, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilman Ford, Paul does have some information he's put together on what other municipalities are, are doing, so we can make sure to include that also. Just wanted to make sure I said that before it flew out of my head.
And I may just point, point of clarity. So I, I believe, so I, I am a yes, but I needed more information. That's the big piece, as we talked about the pilot and, um, so just want to be point of clarification. I'm on board with the idea and I'm on board with the concept. It's just addressing those safeties and then again, cost, what does it look like cost-wise, even if it's a pilot moving forward? But again, I thank you all for just your time and being thoughtful and I really value this coming from PRG, coming from your thoughts. And then if a pilot works and that's where you guys want to go, I, I'm all, I'm all aboard for it.
City Attorney Zarzaki?
Thank you, Mayor. I, a couple of thoughts from a legal perspective. So if we want to do a pilot, I think that's perfectly appropriate and we can do. I would recommend that we still draft a waiver and release form that any user, even if it's a pilot program, would have to sign, um, and indemnify the city. The one question I wanted to raise is sort of how we want to frame this pilot program? Um, I think some of the discussion has been about geographical location of where residents are, having some neighborhoods be allowed to participate in the pilot program whereas some may not. I would, I would advise against that. I would actually suggest that you do a pilot program, perhaps you have a certain days of the month or something that you try it out. That way it's, it's open to anyone that can legally access, um, the golf cart, the golf course with their carts as opposed to precluding certain individuals based on where, where they're living, um, from being in the pilot program.
Sure. And I'd like to see, you know, may, may, may bring something back. So if there's a resolution, some ordinance or so, so we do have policy around it?
Yes, the city manager are talking right now. I think, you know, I think we've gotten some direction on what a pilot program might look like and I think what a policy would look like. Parks, Recreation and Golf would need to work with my office to put together some policy guidelines, right? So for example, we heard this evening, um, that you have to be 18 and drive, have a driver's license to operate and rent a, a golf cart. The same could be applicable to individuals. We would want to have that in writing. I would recommend that we have something formalized by council, absolutely. Um, and aim with that program would be the draft, um, release and waiver form so that you're seeing that as well.
Okay. With that, either councilmembers accept that or you want to add, add on to that?
The council.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Chaconne?
So she's not going to get back on the mic again. She said it's really hard to hear, but that she is following along as best possible, but she is against incentivizing and, uh, her real concern is, is safety and, uh, you know, but golf carts are already legal in the streets here, meeting certain criteria. So, um, you know, uh, so could I ask quickly, um, uh, what the, uh, the, uh, Parks, Recreation and Golf Committee or Advisory Committee, uh, made a, no recommendation, was that basic, basically because of safety?
You want to take it?
Uh, I think we, we are on the same page.
We're fighting for the mic.
Yeah. We're going to just hear an echo over here. Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. It was, a lot of it was about safety. We were thinking about costs. We were thinking about, um, you know, policing, how do you control all of that, you know?
Right.
How do you, how do you, um, plan for those outliers or those anomalies that are, will happen?
Right.
Right? And so it was, it was, a lot of it was about safety and saying, hey, this may, we might need to think about something else.
So when, um, I was saying that, um, my, my parents had a, uh, their own golf court cart, um, the speed limit through the whole town isn't any higher than 20, 25. I mean, so you can't go higher than that through the whole town. And, you know, maybe this is an opportunity for us to look at limiting how, um, ATVs can be operated within the, the city as well. So, um, maybe we need to look at lowering our speed limits all over the place and, and, um, really doing some enforcement. So thank you so much. And I think that was all from, from, uh, Councilmember Chaconne.
Stop, okay. And, uh, you mentioned, you had a good point about what are we trying to achieve in our roads?
I can still hear you really well.
Okay. Did you have anything to add to it?
Honestly, I just don't want to incentivize more golf carts until we have kind of the safety concerns met and infrastructure first. Um, I think we should treat it like ATVs and we're not cool with having a bunch of ATVs going from north to south. So I, I'm concerned about having golf carts. We are still liable for community and pedestrian safety. I, I feel like we just don't have the infrastructure yet to really make this a thing. And I think we, if that's the case, we need to look at it universally, at ATVs again, at how we're going to treat all this type of multimodal transportation.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Poetunoble?
Uh, thanks. Every time that comes back, I have to remind myself, it's in the municipal code already. So people already know that they can drive to the golf course if they want to, if they've, if they follow along on certain streets. You had talked about turf car, uh, turf tires, right? That was in the presentation, were you going to require turf tires?
Well, though, I think as part of a follow-up, we would certainly have a list of a lot of things, including what the city attorney mentioned, as well as safety features, inspection recommend, I mean, there would be, there would be a long list of, I would say, recommended requirements and safety pieces, including what kind of tires are on the golf cart. Yes. And, and 112th Avenue, the speed limit there is 40 miles an hour. So unless I'm mistaken, you could not legally drive your golf cart down 112th Avenue to enter the parking lot.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm not suggesting they would.
Oh, okay.
Um, I said, if you can find a way, you could drive there right now. It is allowed right now because our municipal code allows it, but you would have to follow the laws that are written in the municipal code.
Well, you can't drive on a sidewalk and you can't drive down 112.
Yes, I know, I understand all of that. So I'm saying you are constrained right now by our municipal code. Our municipal code does not allow certain things, but it, what we're trying to decide is about the golf course and that was what at least five people thought that was. Okay.
Right. So if, if I may, uh, one of the slides specifically said that golf carts that were allowed on the golf course would have to maintain the look and feel of the current golf carts. And then Chad and I broke that down into a maximum of two people per car. The tires would have to be the same look and feel of the current carts, including pressure, uh, to ma- make sure the turf is being protected. So those things were addressed in a slide that you didn't see. You brought up an interesting point, the traffic code and the municipal code, and this is where staff would have to come into play. Uh, it says that golf carts are allowed on bike, uh, on the, on the bike paths, uh, which sort of begs the question, does that then mean that they would be allowed on 112th even though the speed limit's 40 in the bike path?
Doesn't say that.
That was something, that was something that I didn't see specifically. It, it seemed like you could make the argument that they would be allowed on 112th because they were in the bike lanes, which is allowed by a different section of the traffic code. So.
It's something to look at. And, and I do want to say one other thing, we're talking about electric vehicles, we're not talking about combustion engines or gas powered vehicles. And there's really something cool about the concept of people finding a golf cart that they can drive around. Some of them you can buy used, some are quite expensive of course, but you can buy some used and we can start using those in the community as well to get around to various, um, events. So to a degree it's worth, um, encouraging, but the golf course is all this on my mind right now. When we start layering on, on all the, all of these other things, it gets a little confusing. So, um, and I understand your safety plan, Mr. Rogers, and that would be part, a good part of the conversation as well for staff to deal with as opposed to PRNG.
Okay. So I think a lot of things have been re- been repeated and direction has been given. So we'll, we'll proceed forward and we'll see what, uh, comes back from the city attorney's o- office. So thank you for your time. Thank you very much for all your participation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
64th Avenue Corridor Study, we'll invite Jenna Han, Director of Public Works forward to the presentation. Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam and City Council, we're here tonight to discuss the 64th Avenue Corridor Study, which will advance a complete streets vision for that avenue. I am joined tonight by Gerardo Martinez, who is our Transportation Engineer and Planner, as well as two representatives from Ayers Consultants, um, that's Paul and Nathan. And at this time, I'll go ahead and hand the floor over to Paul and Nathan to walk us through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your patience tonight. We had a topic before you that was.
It was entertaining.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for having us, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. We really appreciate the opportunity to talk about this corridor project on your agenda. So when we talk about the East 64th Avenue Corridor Study, we are talking about the 1.5 miles from Highway 2 to Quebec. Go ahead, Gerardo. And tonight, we are going to talk about the project history, goals and schedule, the existing conditions, feedback that we have solicited and received, and then alternatives that we've developed over the past nine months. And then we're going to open it up to questions or discussion. And ultimately, what we are seeking is just your input on whether we're headed down the right road as a study. So I do want to note that this corridor was identified as a priority corridor in the 2010 Transportation Master Plan and the 2012 Walk-Bike Fit Plan. So this is not a new project. And when we talk about the goals, these are not goals that we developed.
Excuse me, point of order.
Yes.
For the mayor, but also for you, we don't have the slide program rotating in Fortis. We have to physically move the slide. So if you could tell us when you're on the next slide, it would be helpful. We're having tech problems tonight.
Okay. Absolutely. Thank you very much. And your slide deck is a little different than mine. So did you show the goals yet or no?
We're just asking.
Okay. Can you go back? Oh, we do history and goals. Okay. I'm going to read off of this. So we did kick off the project in September of 2024. Go ahead and get to the history. Thank you. Commerce City was awarded a grant from FHWA to help fund this study. City Council has approved the IGA. This is being administered through CDOT. And Ayers and Meeden-Hunt were selected to begin the study, like I said, in 2024. So the scope of the study is to evaluate the transportation system, existing conditions and potential roadway enhancements, including multi-use paths, bike lanes, intersection, safety improvements, and roadway cross-section configurations. And next slide. So the goals of the corridor study are to improve safety, accessibility and connectivity through and crossing the corridor, promote sustainability and community well-being, and enhance the transportation network for all users. And as a reminder, those largely came from the Transportation Master Plan and the existing Walk-Bike Fit Plan. Next slide. You can just skip ahead. There we go. Project timeline. I mentioned we got kicked off in the fall of 2024. During that time, we executed an existing conditions inventory and a traffic data analysis. And we took that information and presented it to the public in our open house number one, which was on December 5th of 2024. After receiving input from the public, we then developed alternatives and presented those then, went through an initial screening with Public Works staff, presented the top three alternatives to the public in March of this year. And although the star says we are right in the middle, we're actually probably halfway through that first curve now, talking to you guys and looking to refine the alternatives and select a preferred alternative and start concept design. And we will have an opportunity for public input on the final concept design. Keep in mind that the scope of this study is not to do final design, but to settle on preferred alternative and then do just enough to design to help solidify costs and impacts. So we'll be presenting that to the public in some form this fall. And in early 2026, we will have a complete report and a corridor plan. Next slide. And Paul and his team at Meeden-Hunt did a fair amount of work with existing conditions, so I'm going to let him talk about that.
Thank you. Jump in here and talk a little bit about some highlights of the existing conditions. Next slide. Safety, safety is a really important theme. I heard in your earlier discussion throughout the previous plans that this is built on. So this map shows where some of the crashes have occurred along the corridor. We have a handful that were pedestrian and bicycle crashes as well, including the fatality at Glencoe, the pedestrian fatality in 2024. So there's definitely justification for some multimodal and speed and traffic calming improvements along this corridor, pretty much evenly distributed throughout the corridor from east to west. Next slide. Lighting, we also saw a lot of variance in the lighting, lighting type, fixture type, and even functionality along the corridor. So there's definitely some unlit areas and inconsistency in the intersection and mid-block lighting and scale of the lighting, whether it's for pedestrians or vehicles. Next slide. Operationally, the traffic's moving pretty well. We did hear a lot of concerns about events, traffic flow and cut through during events at the stadium, but on a typical day, really the most congested intersections on the east side of Quebec, which we're not looking to widen Quebec as part of this study, but moving pretty well throughout the corridor. So in terms of developing alternatives, even in considering the traffic generated, the Greyhound, Mahein Mile High Greyhound Park project, which is primarily accessing and fronting 62nd, we do feel we have a free hand to prioritize some other modes, you know, with while maintaining very steady traffic volumes. That D grade that you see at the elementary school, you know, that's really more because of the operational phasing of the traffic light there to give pedestrians an exclusive right-of-way in front of the school. So you couldn't prove that by deprioritizing pedestrians. We don't recommend that. But there's plenty of pavement out there to move traffic. Again, some of that is an operational choice, that intersection. Next slide. You know, I think the number one thing here is the speeds. So this is a speed study we did east of Glencoe. Again, this is where the fatality occurred. And, you know, I don't think anybody needs to have a PhD in physics or traffic engineering to know the faster the car goes, the more likely the pedestrian that is hit is going to get severely injured, if not killed. So you did lower the speed limit at some point in this corridor over the past, I'd say, 18 months. But 81% of the traffic is going over the posted speed limit. So signs, enforcement, it's not really enough. You guys have to do something geometrically to slow traffic down. This is the four-lane section, or five-lane section, sorry. Next slide. East of Olive, where you have two lanes, two moving lanes, curbside parking, it's not 80%, it's 68%. It's a little bit better, but drivers are not respecting the speed limit and, you know, they're traveling. Really, we would like to see traffic at the speed limit or below in this corridor. There's a lot of pedestrian generators, schools, parks, you know, events that we want people to be out on foot, bike and other modes. Next slide. I will kick it back to Nathan real quick to tell you what we heard.
Thank you very much. So when we do a corridor study, one of the primary functions is to solicit and then incorporate feedback from stakeholders in the public. Go ahead, Gerardo. So our first round focused on stakeholders. That would typically be city staff, transit agencies, fire EMS, police, if there are any schools on the corridor, bringing them in. So for this project, we had a stakeholder walk. We tried to do a site walk so that people can actually see actual conditions. We had 18 people walk the corridor with us on the 13th of November, including the city, RTD, the public schools, and then fire and law enforcement. Next slide. What we observed, Paul hinted at several of these, what we observed during that walk is ramps and sidewalks are definitely not ADA compliant. Many driveways are not actively used. Lane widths are very inconsistent, and this is on the roadway. Paul mentioned that event traffic can and does cause major congestion for short periods of time. Emergency response said they actually can utilize the corridor pretty well, with the exception of making some turn movements at some of the narrower intersections. Paul mentioned the streetlights. Also mentioned issues with the bell times at Central Elementary, and that is largely a function, as he mentioned, operationally prioritizing pedestrians at those times. And one thing to note is that there is anticipated to be additional bike and pet activity with the new Mile High Greyhound Park development. Go ahead, Gerardo. Our second round of feedback, or excuse me, second activity during the first round was a public open house that was held about three weeks after the stakeholder field walk at the rec center. 12 people, there were more than 12 people in attendance. 12 people did respond via written comments, either in person or online, most noting that they live on or very near the corridor. Most people use the corridor daily and most people, of course, primarily drive, which is what you would expect on a corridor like that. I think something important to note is we asked if any mode felt safe, what mode would you use? And five of those 12 people said that they, instead of driving, they would bike. So you see some primary factors preventing people from walking or biking. Speeding is number one, and then a variety of geometric issues. What they would like to see are largely infrastructure and geometric improvements. I would point out that all of those improvements, with the exception of lighting, can and frequently do assist with calming traffic speeds. Next slide. Just this spring, in March, we had our second round of feedback. As I mentioned earlier, this was after we had developed, analyzed existing conditions, developed three alternatives, presented those alternatives to the public and got feedback. So you can see, safety, this is from the public, safety is number one most referred to issue or concern. You can kind of see by the time you split, accessibility, pedestrians and bicycles, those are smaller, but combined, those were a major safety element. You can also see parking is a big word there. And we'll get a little bit into that with the alternatives discussion, that parking on the corridor is important to the people who live on the corridor. And as Paul mentioned, parking can actually help with traffic calm, speed calming. Next slide. Next slide, please. All right, I'm going to jump back to Paul.
So we've come up with three alternatives and present them to you briefly. Again, what we're asking for is, do you agree with our recommendation for which alternative to advance into conceptual design and the preferred concept? So next slide. The first one, we're calling it a shared-use path. So this would construct on the north side of 64th, which is the side that the elementary school's on. It would construct a wide, minimum eight feet, up to 12 feet in some section, a wide, shared-use path for walking, biking, jogging, rolling, whatever you wanted to do. And in addition, we do some spot improvements, like enhanced pedestrian crossings. We would take that four-lane section and we would narrow it to three with a center turn lane in front of Mile High Greyhound. And we would widen into the road a little bit to stay within the right-of-way. As you move further east, next slide, the path continues. We get into the existing three-lane section, we maintain that, keeping the path. We'd be looking at some selective driveway closures where they're either redundant or gated off or not really used today to enhance safety. And then as you go all the way to the east, that path continues. Next slide. That path continues. We maintain the two-lane footprint, but we would lose parking on the south side of the road because there's not enough right-of-way to put a shared-use path on the north side without going into people's yards. And we did not want to take excessive right-of-way to make this alternative happen. So there's a little trade-off there. You would lose some of the parking on the south side, and you wouldn't have as much of a buffer between the sidewalk and the road, but you would have a narrower road and you would have a much wider sidewalk. So we think that's an okay trade. So that's alternative one. We're calling it a shared-use path. Alternative two, next slide, we call this the bike lane alternative. And again, like Nathan mentioned, we did hear that people would bike if it was safe. And so what we did here on the west end, we similarly narrowed to three lanes with a center turn lane, one travel lane in each direction. And we put what we called buffered bike lanes. They're separated by a few feet from the travel lane. So there's an eastbound one and a westbound one on the north and south side. Not much improvement to any sidewalks. This is really about the bikes. Next slide. So in the center, there you can see, we just continue with that. We would get rid of that center turn lane that exists today in the middle of the corridor because we'd need room for the bike lanes. This alternative really does not move the existing curb. The curb and gutter stays exactly where it is today. It's largely just a reconfiguration of the roadbed itself. And as you move all the way to the east, next slide, this would take all of the parking as you get down to Quebec to put those bike lanes in the street. But again, you know, we did hear from the public that they would bike, and we did not see a lot of utilization of the parking. There's plenty of driveways and side streets, so that's a big trade-off there. Lastly, alternative three, we call this the combination. So basically, it's, and I'm going to go over it again because the only distinction is where they meet in the middle. So we'd put the bike lanes on the west end, where it's four lanes. We'd take it down to three and put those nice bike lanes in. And then on the east end, we'd put the path on the north side. So this kind of balances all the modal goals. It maximizes the parking, but also gives a nice shared-use path on the north side. So it will give you an end-to-end bicycle connection, but it would give you a much nicer walking environment to the east of Holly from the school one. And we've, you know, over by Mile High, you do have some nicer sidewalks that are already out there, so you don't really need to spend the money to do that. So that's sort of our compromise alternative, alternative three. So putting this all together, next slide, what we did is we kind of scored these. We ran these through a bunch of different metrics that we came up with, with Gerardo and the project team at the city, just overall construction cost, and we'll give you some numbers on that. How accommodating are they for bicycles? You know, good, bad, better. How accommodating are they for pedestrians? Are they safer than what's out there today? Do they achieve the traffic calming and speed management that we all want? Do they require geometric construction, you know, moving the curb a little bit, a lot all the way? Do they allow for some level of streetscaping by putting some space between the sidewalk and the curb? Do they need right-of-way, a little bit, a lot? Do they have any impacts over traffic operations? And do they have any impacts on utilities? There's obviously a ton of above-ground utilities in this corridor. So these are the factors we use. When we put this all together, next slide, basically, alternative two came out on top by a couple points, just again, because it's the one that doesn't move the curbs. It saves a lot, a lot of money. Right behind it was the hybrid, the bike lanes on the west, the shared-use path on the east. And then alternative one was just the straight shared-use path, again, largely because of cost right-of-way that pulled that one down. Next slide. So here's the range of cost. If you did the shared-use path, again, like Nathan said, this is a 1.5-mile corridor. It's not just a couple blocks. So it is rather expensive to do all. So it is rather expensive to do all of that. And when I say all of that, when you're going in, you're, you know, gonna start modifying, do some road work, you gotta bring everything up to code. There's all the ADA ramps, the traffic signals. There's a lot of aged infrastructure out here, so that's all baked in. 10 to 11 million. The on-street bike lanes would be about four to five. And the combined hybrid alternative, about right in the middle there, seven to eight. So our recommendation is that the study proceed with alternative three. We'll see what we can do about getting that cost down, but that seems to check the most boxes. And so our ask in this discussion is, does council and mayor support that? Or would they like to see another alternative? Or how would you like the study to proceed? Thank you very much. I'll let Nathan field questions.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go with Councilmember Kim, and then Councilmember Teeter, since that's his street.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for their presentation. I do have a question. Actually, let me just start with my response. My response is, alternative three would be the right approach, in my opinion. But I would also include in alternative three, where the bike path is located at, that there is actual, what he calls "ballards", potentially, that blocks from the, from the vehicles that are traveling down those roads to the actual, to the actual bike path itself. The question regarding that one, though, is, just to confirm, you said, I think they, it is, it is ADA compliant at that point. That one would be ADA compliant, meaning like folks with wheelchairs, or whatever the case may be, able to travel down that road. Second part of that, too, I have a question on, is I look at alternative three. It looks like it, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I heard you say it, too, that it would remove on-street parking. Is that correct? How much of an impact is that to residents that live there?
So we studied the parking amount and how it was used on that half of the corridor where the parking is allowed today. Alternative three would remove half of that, because it would only remove it on the south side. We found the parking to be like less than 50% utilized. So that's why we felt comfortable, because...
And have you heard from residents along that area regarding, hey, you're taking away my parking ability? What else, what would they, what would they comment back with?
They didn't want to lose their parking spot. Yeah.
And was there any alternatives for them?
I never used the word "lose" or "remove". I used the word "displaced", because we can always find another designated parking area, even if, you know, we had to do resident parking only, or something like that. So we can look along the side streets, you know, to try and replace some of those parking spots. Not all of them were residential, by the way.
Yeah.
Eastern half, some were commercial. So we would look for those kind of solutions.
Okay. And then, going back to the speed study, this was an independent speed study, not done by the city, but by your team.
Yes.
My question then for the city is, have we actually done an independent, have we done a study ourselves, and does it match this same data?
Your mic, please.
Yeah, turn your mic.
I believe the data has changed over time, and that was a result of city staff doing a reduction out there. Speed limits were 35 miles an hour, and about maybe two or three years ago, they were dropped to 30. So data has changed.
Okay. All right.
May I add?
Go for it.
One thing we discussed when we were talking about the city traffic studies was that when we do a traffic study, we just put a tube out there. If you don't see the tube, you would never know there's a speed study going on. Versus the city has a mobile, I believe it was a mobile...
Right.
A visual cue, and most people, once they drive through there, will remember there's a camera.
They see a camera, they're like, oh crap, I need to slow down. But if you put, you go over that tube, you're not seeing that, not paying attention. Got it.
So one of the comments we talked about internally was, you're likely to see lower speeds from a traffic study using cameras, speed, advertised speed cameras versus a tube on the ground where it's a more natural flow of traffic.
Awesome. All right, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Councilmember Teeter.
Yeah, I just talked to a lady today. Her biggest problem on 64th and Ivanhoe was she can't get out on this street, because she can't see to get out the way it's designed. And so which alternative would be the best to help her get out?
Which street is she speaking about?
Ivanhoe, it's right around Ivanhoe and 64th.
I mean, I would just comment to that, you know, when we would advance into final design, we would make sure all site distance triangles are clear. That would also be posted on the, sorry, based on the design speed, and hopefully the design speed would be a little bit lower with these improvements. So we would be looking at that in the final design phase, but that's a great comment. Thank you.
I would, also, may I add another comment to that?
Yes.
The more, the more frequent and utilized street-side parking is, frequently, you will experience, you may experience difficulty seeing each direction. Much of this preliminary plan includes some level of bump outs at the intersection. One of the things we need to work through is operationally, turn movements. Is that gonna be a problem? But one thing we really try to do is, in a study like this, keep cars from parking too close to the intersection for that exact reason.
What is the law now on that?
That I don't know.
It varies, it varies by city to city. I mean, a good daylighting policy is about 25 feet.
And how about parking too close to somebody's driveway?
That varies by city to city, too. I mean, it's, it's a similar site distance issue, but not as strict as at a public street space. Maybe just 10, 10 feet within a driveway, roughly.
Okay.
Depends if it's a commercial driveway or a residential driveway, too.
All right. Then I noticed on 64th and Monaco, we, you know, they have a no-right-turn sign up there on red, and, because there's, it's just impossible, if you're headed westbound on 64th, to look to the south, because of that business there, parks the big trucks right on the corner. You know, I don't know if we have any ordinances against that, or if that's legal, or it's their property, but, you know, you would think if they got a lot of vehicles parked in there, you'd think they'd park something to where you could see over it.
That is hard to regulate, but...
Yeah.
We should discuss it with the property owner as we do the final, because we're gonna be talking to different property owners about their driveway usage, and, you know, closing it, or maybe restricting. If it's not closed proper, because it's gated or something like that, we may be putting a short median island in front, you know, to eliminate some conflicts. So I think those discussions can happen in the final design phase.
Well, I don't have a specific one alternate picked out here, but I do like the bicycle one, to where it makes it a little bit safer for them. An alternate two.
Which one, Councilmember Teeter?
Alternate two, where they got bike lanes.
Okay.
And that would restrict some of the parking, wouldn't it?
All of the parking.
All of the parking, okay.
All of the parking.
Which it means they would be going faster than 30 miles an hour, probably.
Not, not really, because the road will appear a lot more narrow.
Okay.
You know, if you didn't put the vertical separation, the curb stops, that Councilmember Kim mentioned, you'd probably have to enforce people parking in the bike lanes, because there'd be nothing stopping them from doing it. But if you put up the vertical barriers between the travel lane and the bike lane, then it's too narrow for them to get in there and park. Thank you.
Well, I would be good with no parking there.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Dukes.
Thank you for the time and the effort, getting the community feedback. I like number three. I think that's a great approach to find the balance between biking and expanded walking paths for the community.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ford.
I, too, would support alternative three. I am a little concerned, though, with the speed situation. You know, I grew up in this area for, you know, the first, my first 30 years of life, and we didn't have those kind of speeding problems. I'm curious, did you have the speeds checked when there was an event letting out at Dick's versus just normal, everyday traffic? Because I can assume that there's a lot of people that are not from our community that are gonna be utilizing 64th Avenue to get away from the traffic and down to the Highway 85 corridor, Highway 2 corridor. And I would, I would assume that there are higher speeds when there's that kind of traffic trying to get out of one area. And, I don't know, it's, every single road in our community, people are speeding. You can drop the speed limits, they're not gonna slow down. I don't know why. The mentality is there to just continue to speed. I see it every day. And I know we don't have enough cops. And even if we do put cops out there and start writing tickets, we get pushed back that it's a speed trap. People are speeding everywhere. And, you know, this is putting this road on a road diet by narrowing it down to the two lanes. I want it to be safer, but if we can't control the speeds, if it doesn't slow people down, it's gonna make it worse, because it is narrower. And there's higher likely that you're not gonna see somebody. And so I'm for alternative three, but I also think that we need to involve our police department and have a plan to go, have our, have our cops go out there and start writing tickets, because I am a true believer that until you start paying big fines, because you're violating the law on speeding, people aren't slowing down. They literally, you know, it's that, tear the ticket up in front of your face, and I'm gonna go right back to doing what I was doing. And a huge lack of respect from what it was when I grew up here. So I hope alternative three helps.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. I'll say, too, the speed data, I mean, it was over a 24 to 40-hour period, but I will, I will double-check that it didn't occur during an event at the stadium. Speeding is a behavioral society. The increase, it's not just a Commerce City problem. You shouldn't feel that you're alone. On the enforcement end, I would add that automated enforcement, Federal Heights is just putting in their first speed camera on 92nd Avenue. Very similar percentage of vehicles traveling way above that. These things work. You know, it's, enabling legislation is in place in the state for local agencies to do this, and they work. I mean, people know they're there, and they slow down.
The other, the other thing, I'm glad you answered that question, because with alternative three, I know there are some bump outs. I wanna make sure that we're also working with the fire department from a perspective of being able to get their equipment through and not restricting them, because we did the bump outs at 62nd and Holly. And I know there was a lot of concerns from residents in that area when we did those bump outs and concerns. So I wanna make sure we're working with those agencies, like the fire department, so that we know they can navigate those roads. That's one of our main roads in town. They need to be able to navigate.
Thank you. We will be running those turning templates on the proposed curb bump outs.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. And then Councilmember Chacon says she likes alternate three. She states, we need a shared use, not just bike paths. But alternate one is expensive, so she's chosen alternate three. Councilmember Douglas.
Yes, I'm a three, too. I'm glad you mentioned Federal Heights. I'm telling you, you better not go over 20, 25 miles an hour there, anywhere, or you will get a ticket, and a substantial ticket. And it's funny that constituent had texted me on this, and I said, you know, if we had like a dedicated traffic control department that was just writing tickets, and we lowered our speed limits, we could probably fill our coffers two times over with. But I know that's how Federal Heights does it. And you better not speed through there, because you will pay the price. So I'm three, and I think, you know, maybe people, when they come to Commerce City, they know that they can't, they can't come here, through here speeding. They might be able to do it in other places, but not here.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Noble.
Thank you. Three looks good to me also. How, the elementary school is right on the corner at 64th and Holly. So one direction, it's bike path, and the other direction, it's shared path. Is there a logic to that, at that intersection, that the uses are split that way?
Yes, because that's the intersection where they have all the traffic stopping at the light, and then the pads, the pedestrians can walk. They have the all-walk in all directions. So it's really, it's, 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 there's crossing guards there and bell time. It's a good spot to make that transition.
So is there an intense use on 64th that doesn't have to do with people living in that area, or going, or just using services in that area? I know Prairie Parkway crosses into 64th, and tons of people use Prairie Parkway for commuting. So are they continuing on down 64th and speeding through in order to get to Highway 85? Or do you know what might be going on?
So we pulled some, for lack of a better word, GPS data, you know, to see, you know, where people were coming from and going to in the larger region as they use 64th, at least in the blocks within this study. And it really is not a cross-town route. I mean, most of the trips were, you know, one to four miles. They were, they were fairly local. So we were expecting maybe some of what you described, but that's not what the data says. And this is, I mean, we all know how prevalent the GPS data is on your cell phone and your navigation apps. So it must be on other, east-west streets to the north and south that are carrying a little bit more of the regional traffic.
Well, if it's the locals that are speeding, they're endangering the kids in their area also. So it would be incumbent on them to slow down if they were actually thinking about it. But those speed cameras are very intriguing as well, so...
It's unfortunate that there has to be so many crashes for those types of...
Yeah, if we don't have enough people to do enforcement, enough officers to do enforcement, then it seems to me we need to find another way. We, we don't want any more deaths of young people.
Yeah, most agencies don't have those resources.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what alternate did you pick?
Did you get me, is it three?
Three.
Yes, I did.
Thank you. All right. And I will be a three as well. I do like the way you laid this study out. Especially concerns down by Mile High Greyhound Park, when you're going west past Holly, because I'm sure you're aware of Progestion. Young, young Laura got killed in that area, right by there. So, no, the other, there's a two. So I really appreciate this, this focus. And I was gonna ask the city, now this corridor study was through Dr. Cog? Or is that, was that through C-Dot?
The funding was through FHWA, and C-Dot is coordinating the expenditures.
All right. So this will be largely funded by C-Dot, then?
Just the conceptual design.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we still have to go and seek other modes of funding to move the project along.
I wonder if this could be part of, go to Dr. Cog for some funds, and maybe even C-Dot, because it connects right to C-Dot's road?
That's a great question, Mayor. I think, to your point, yes. I think there's a number of different opportunities that we can look at, whether it is C-Dot H sub funds, congressually direct spending in upcoming years, right? I think, I don't wanna speak for our consultants, but, you know, we're looking at something that's closer to a 15, maybe closer to a 30% design. So, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done to get to construction drawings. So as we work towards that, right, we'll have to continue to manage the cost and continue engagement with the, with the community. So once that starts to get more dialed in, we'd be able to then, you know, know what we'd be looking for and being able to bridge some of those funding gaps. uh, we'd be able to then, you know, know what we'd be looking for and being able to bridge some of those, those funding gaps once we, uh, are able to make some inroads with, uh, the various, uh, potential funding sources.
Okay, thank you.
May I add?
Yes.
That, um, part of the scope of our study is to, uh, have a section of the report, um, for a financial plan and an implementation plan where we will do exactly that, look at what opportunities there may be now. Now, uh, I think we all know that opportunities that exist today or three months ago may not exist, um, from the federal government in six months or a year. Um, so this is a strange time to be trying to, um, to figure that out. But part of the study will start to look at what funding opportunities there are. Help you guys through that.
All right, thank you both for your time.
Thank you.
All right, onto reports. All right, City Manager Rogers.
How we doing, Mayor? Thank you very much. I'm waiting until Ms. Adame brings up, uh, the spreadsheet so that we can kinda talk through, uh, the second meeting in July for a study session. While she waits, uh, I, I did want to circle back on a topic. I know that I had raised a couple meetings ago and that was on the lobbyist RFP. I know I had brought up that obviously we have a panel on which, um, we have to be able to conduct those interviews. Uh, obviously the lobbyist RFP or lobbyist, uh, service is a direct service that provides advisement and guidance to you all as council. But they also provide critical feedback as to potential bills that may impact our abilities to do operations. Um, as it has always been in the past, we have conducted those interviews internally. But, uh, knowing that there has been some express interest in participating as part of the process. And I think it's a worthwhile opportunity to have a member or two of council uh, to participate in that process with us. Um, I'm once again reaching back out to see how council would like to move forward in participating as part of that procurement process, knowing that once again, it, there is a duality to that.
Okay, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Noble.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I'm answering here because Policy and Governance Committee had a meeting last week and had this discussion. Um, when this was first raised, I had mistakenly said that it was, it should be the, the people who are assigned to, um, the Colorado Municipal League as the liaisons to the municipal league. But I was incorrect on that. That is not what our, um, policy says on legislation. We are going to be making some changes potentially to that to bring forward to you. But instead, the Policy and Governance Committee, me, uh, those gathered for the Policy and Governance Committee wanted to open this up to a vote of the, of the city council. I don't think we can do that tonight, but I would still, uh, like to see that, uh, Mayor Douglas be one of, of the two interviewers.
Thank you, ma'am. It, what I can definitely do is bring this back on July 7th for a conversation that, uh, will allow for you all to take a vote.
Hey, big boy.
Thank you for that. Um, to July, excuse me, sorry.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Dukes.
Uh, thank you for bringing this opportunity for us to be involved in the process. Can you talk about what the time commitment, what that looks like in interviewing and?
That's a wonderful question. I had actually asked it of my staff and they had shared with me a, a timeline of what that might look like. Um, so with publication, distribution of the RFP, uh, what we assume would be distribution of that RFP out, uh, by the middle of this week. Um, we have a deadline, uh, posted for submissions of those to occur within a month's timeframe. So submissions would be submitted by no later than, uh, July 30th. From that period, uh, those who are representative on the panel would then have a two-week period to review the submittal bids or packages that came in. Uh, and then there would be interviews the week of August 25th. Um, and then there would be a recommendation for selection from that panel that given the number of years and estimated dollar amount, uh, that would be over, uh, my authority would come to council uh, to make, uh, to give myself then the authority to negotiate a contract. We would be assuming some discussion before city council, uh, the month of September, uh, for a, uh, for a regular meeting here. July 28th. Wanted to be able to share with you on July 28th. Right now, we're slated for, uh, end time or adjournment time of around 10:15. We have five items identified for that evening. The presentation of our 2024 Annual Comprehensive Final Financial Report. Um, what you see as actual, the growth and development in the northern range is actually going to move either to the first or second on that agenda. You all may remember, uh, that was a motion made by Councilmember Ford. As part of that discussion, uh, the request was made to allow this to be a facilitated discussion between you all as council about what is your vision for growth and development in the northern range? Um, the facilitator would be, uh, your facilitator from Peak Facilitation, Heather Bergman. I have had a conversation with Heather Bergman to confirm whether or not she is available. And on July 28th, she has confirmed that she is. Um, that is where you see that hour and 30-minute timeframe. Um, we also on that evening have council budget request discussion. Um, this is once again talking about what you all as a body would like to see as your top five items. Um, as we think about budget enhancements as what we go through as a process, um, as a department. Last year, you all may remember that we, we had this discussion with you all during the September 9th workshop where we ultimately then came back to you all with what that dollar amount was going to be as an impact uh, to the budget when we actually opened it, uh, in the October, November timeframe. So once again, trying to get ahead of this so that we can actually start to think about what the financial impacts or implications may be or dollar amounts would be, will be when we actually start to go through that workshopping in the August, September timeframe. Uh, we then have a conversation around the 68th Avenue Corridor update. And then lastly, but not least, we have HB 25, 1295 food truck bill code update. I would say this, obviously you have some pretty meaty topics. I would, uh, recommend that you could always push item, the very last item, the food truck bill code update. There's nothing pressing, there's nothing, uh, stating that we need to have that discussion by the end of July. That would free up an additional 45 minutes that you could throw towards your conversation on growth and development in the northern range or towards your council budget request discussion that evening to give you more bandwidth. Um, similarly, you could also look at that with your 68th cor- corridor, um, 68th Avenue Corridor update. Once again, that's an update, there's no critical decision in that. We can always come and provide you a memo on where we stand with that, with the community. We're still making touchpoints. So, nothing critical that you need to do with those two items as far as giving staff a head nod or consensus if you really wanna focus on act for council growth.
I would say moving the food truck bill, where would you put that in?
I mean, we would obviously.
October?
We would look at October, um, and reschedule it for a future time of day. Like I said, I don't see, we don't see that as a, uh, as a, as a fatalistic item that needs to come for a discussion before the September timeframe. And, and if things do change, then obviously, uh, we have ways of being able to get in front of you, Mayor, during a regular meeting or otherwise.
All right, is, uh, council okay with moving that to October? Okay, consensus says yes. Thank you.
Okay. And like.
No, just, uh, we're just moving to one, food truck, right?
And you wanna keep the 68th Avenue Corridor update, that's 30 minutes. Like I said, we can easily put that in a memo and get that out to you with where we stand and what we're looking at.
On 68th corridor?
On 68th Avenue Corridor. Like I said, we've been well in that process for the last two years and we continue on that path.
Sure. Now, council liked to include 68th Avenue Corridor moved to later date?
Okay.
Yes.
So we'll, we'll distribute that additional hour and 15 minutes. Um, so that, that way, I'm, can't do the math right now, I'm trying to do that. But we'll take that additional time and we'll distribute it equally across the growth and development and council budget request discussion for that, for that night. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for City Manager Rogers or your support? I will say that, um, the last two weeks when we took action, you took action, your team took action for the homeless along the corridor where the Greyhound Park is. I, I appreciate the due diligence and clean that area and making sure, I mean, we do have spots where people are still trying to camp out and all that, right? But that really set the tone. So, and I know things are warmer now, I mean, this, the air is warmer now. So we're gonna have re- repeat offenders in those areas. But just the action you guys took to initiate that, I, I do appreciate that effort.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's, it's gonna be a work in progress, right? Um, and, and we're, you know, meeting more frequently on, you know, uh, what I will call emerging trends, just with how we're seeing response to in- increased enforcement and, uh, response to engagement with different staff. Uh, that is not, uh, public safety in nature, whether it's community well-being or, or, or public works when, when being, uh, when, when being noticed in, in, in the, in the, in the like. So, we're gonna continue to, to respond to those trends and, and try to stay ahead of that curve, sir. But I, you know, um, as I will say to you all, but also as, as to our, our community as the more that they can communicate and, and, and share those, those stories that they see within our, our, our community, the, the more that we can then stay on top of it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dukes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just on the note is, are you, uh, noting or tracking or keeping qualitative data around what you're hearing? And, and hopefully we can get an understanding of what are some of the key issues?
So the.
Always get nervous you gotta talk to the lawyer before you talk to me at a school.
Beer, fears?
Yeah, so there, there's, there's a level set of data that I think it's in, that we come across intuitively that helps to inform some of our decisions on engagement and enforcement. Um, we do have that, um, for our purposes and, and obviously we are, you know, we, we leverage and we use that very sensitively, uh, and, and appropriately as, as we are out there in our community.
Can I, can I maybe rephrase my, my comment? It's around, um, I guess, end goal for the city is to make sure folks have somewhere to live, have quality community, have a roof where they had. And I'm curious if your staff is just capturing those stories so that later on, we can get a better understanding of like, what if somebody challenges some of the unhoused communities facing? What are some things we should be thinking about that we weren't in the near future? Just based on those interactions, is that possible or?
Yes, I, I think there are definitely stories that can be shared from the, from the engagements. Um, and I, it's, it's on the tip of my tongue of what our community well-being calls those engagements that helps to inform those who are seeking resources, that are seeking, uh, the wraparound services and how we connect them with wraparound services and, and, and some of the, uh, what I will call teachable moments that help to inform future decision points that we, um, we leverage from an operational perspective, um, for those who want help versus who, who do not. Uh, and I think, you know, what we have to do a better job of internally is that, you know, we utilize that data in a sense that it means from our resource roundups with community well-being. I just got a note from the resource roundup is how do we, how do we share that information? Once again, sensitively with you all on a, on a basis that, um, gives a, a, a level of deference and respect, uh, of telling that story. Um, but also doesn't lead to some form of persecution that then when we make future re-engagement with those individuals, it's harder than to get, have them wanna work within our system.
Yeah, that makes sense, cause for me, I would love to have that data to begin to think about policy later on around how do we keep improving our city, our supports? And ultimately, what do we need to do as a community? Cause I know it's complex, it's a lot of different stories that bring people to where they're at. And it'll be great just to have more information so we make just quality decisions, um, that help everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
Uh, thank you. Recently, uh, someone reached out to me to say that they were seeking, um, disability retrofitting and, uh, reached out to the, uh, uh, you know, through the ACT program. But they were told that they weren't eligible because they lived above 88th. And, um, I, you know, I genuinely don't recall the city council voting to make this a geographic rule. I thought it had to do with qualifications in other ways. Um, if there is a geographic rule that we approved, I would like to revisit that to make certain that people in need, no matter where they live in Commerce City, are, um, are able to access the seven and a half million that we put into the ACT program.
Great question, Mayor Pro Tim, thank you for that. Uh, I do remember that coming through and you sharing that with us. And I tasked Mr. Tolbert looking into that internally. And, you know, he's been working, uh, with some of our staff as well as the city attorney's office on, and trying to find you a resolution. And I, I believe he has an update that he can share with you and the rest of council.
Thank you, sir. You did ask the question, we've been trying to get an answer to it. So when the program was presented, the program was presented as south of 88th. Because when we initially did it, we thought it had, or 96th. It had to be, the ARPA funds had to be used in that area. We found out subsequently they didn't. But the two contracts we have for home repair, one with Brothers and one with Habitat, their contracts say that they will work south of 88th. Uh, city attorney is looking into it to see if council desires that we open it up, uh, that we, uh, how we have to amend their contracts. And so we just hadn't gotten completely finished with that. But we, the intent is to bring it back and see if council would like to amend the contract, if that's what we have to do or change the policy to allow anybody that's income qualified, uh, wherever they live to be able to participate.
That would be a great idea. And of course, whether it's 88th or 96th, both of those avenues exist on the east side in Ward 4 as well. So there are, that means that certain members of Ward 4 are air-billed to qualify, but not all of them if they have income issues. Okay.
Right.
Thank you. It would be good to revisit, I'm glad. Thank you.
All right, thank you. City Attorney Zarzaki?
Couple of items, Mayor. Um, just a reminder to council, I will be at the CML convention, um, up in Breckenridge this week, Wednesday through Friday, I think I'll see most of you there. The other item I wanted to keep, um, or to bring to your attention is you all have scheduled an executive session for the municipal judge's annual performance review on the 7th of July, I believe. Um, you should have in your inboxes an email that was sent. You should have in your inboxes an email that was sent from the HR Director on June 10th with a number of materials to prepare you for that annual review. I'm just reminding you all that that email came in and to the extent that any of you have questions or need guidance on preparation, please feel free to reach out to either myself or to Eva. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Kim?
No, nothing for him. Just reports.
Yeah, I'm just going to go after reports. Yep. Councilmember Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. So just a reporting out here, duty celebration. I attended that. I will say outstanding job as far as for everyone who all made it happen. DEI Commission, great show putting that together, Public Works Parks, staff for setup and tear down. All the boards and commissions that were there and everyone else wasn't that wasn't in attendance. It was definitely a great turnout altogether. Friday, Suncor meeting, just want to report out myself and I know Mayor, Mayor will probably speak to this too. Have a few notes on here regarding the Suncor meeting. There is going to be a major maintenance outage. There's a significant maintenance outage that's scheduled for next year. This initiative happens every five years and is called a turnaround, which aims to identify and address various major maintenance and other capital projects focusing on reliability regulatory required projects. Please, please note the meeting was with Alicia and also Jeff. Jeff, the VP for Suncor here in Colorado. Safety considerations emphasize that the safety is a top priority within all operations. Concerns have arisen from past experiences where production was prioritized over the well-being of individuals. Based on the current VP of Suncor's mission, which is focused on people, then planet, then production. There was a legal matter that occurred, a citizen suit that occurred that was originally filed last year regarding health environmental issues. However, the judge did dismiss the case, it looks like, last month. The FLIR technology, they mentioned, which is the fence line monitoring system. And it tracks emissions through light beams that are placed around the refinery boundary. There's a lot of air monitoring systems and data in the region. The refinery is one of the most regulated facilities in the state. For example, there have been over 290 hours of air exorcisms in this year alone, which is a significant decrease compared to the 2,327 hours from 2022, which highlights a significant progress made towards compliance. But of course, there's still more work to do. What else was there? They also mentioned, obviously, a new CEO was appointed in Canada who is more open, who's open to a more public oriented communication approach than the previous leadership. Let's see, a tour around Suncor facilities was welcomed. So if any council would like to, they're to offer, they would offer insights into ongoing projects and improvements. There's going to be cleanup efforts and vegetation overgrowth have noticeably improved when compared to conditions from two years ago. The FLIR reroute project has received state approval. Suncor open to having follow-up discussions regarding the project process. Couple of other things too, just want to note here, trust issues was a was a was a topic. Notably, there has been prevailing issue of trust between Suncor and council, indicating a need for improvement, improved relationships and transparency in future dealings. Essentially, they're looking to try to become more collaborative with us. But of course, in the past, we've had problems before. As far as potential future engagement, there was discussion about organizing a roundtable like previous arrangements made with developers and council. It was suggested to initiate discussions with two or three council members, specifically with Jeff and Alicia, to foster better communication and trust first. And then on Saturday, thank you, Annette, for putting this on the on the website. I had a conversations with Craig, similar to the year to the walk about nothing, whatever it's called, from Councilmember Dukes on Saturday, June 21st. The main topic of discussion surrounding the event was around housing. Outside of the detailed conversation we had, which I will not speak to here, residents were advised and recommended to attend the Housing Authority meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for July 9th. If it changes, I'm sure we will be made aware. But for me, at some point in the near future, there will be additional information that I will share and would like to work with council on with regards to current policies surrounding enforcement. Just kind of the gist of it with residents, there's there's existing issues. And so I mentioned Housing Authority to them would be a great opportunity for them to speak, especially during the public comment period, to to speak on those issues to them. That is all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. You have the councilmembers' reports? Councilmember Douglas?
Thank you. I also attended the Juneteenth event and it was so well done and so well attended. And I just want to thank everyone for all of their hard work in putting that together and making it so successful. Not only our paid staff who who worked so hard to put the whole thing together and their their hard work. They started early in the morning and they went all the way through to the end in putting up and taking it down and and making sure that everyone had a great time, all the volunteers. And so kudos for the to the city for putting that on and our administration and making sure that Juneteenth was celebrated and honored as a federal holiday. I attended the Policy and Governance Commission or Committee meeting. And that was with councilmembers Kim and Chacon, as well as Mayor Protem Noble. And also attended by City Attorney Zarzaki, who did a fabulous job in taking notes and making sure that it was a very productive meeting. So I wanted to thank everyone for attending that. I also went to the Housing Authority Special Meeting that was held on Friday evening. Thank you so much for making me an alternate to that. And since Councilmember Kim was unable to attend, I went to that and I will be doing a report on that. But I want to do it during a regular meeting so that my report goes on the record. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thanks very much. Had a retreat committee meeting this week as well and with Heather Bergman and the idea being how are we going to be getting her more involved? And we had eyes ideas for that. So it was great to see her again. She is, she has begun watching our meetings, by the way. That was one thing that we had asked for is that she watch our meetings and then talk, you know, talk with us individually about about how we handle ourselves and handle issues during the meetings. So that is occurring as well. As was mentioned, we had a meeting of policy and governance, covered several topics. Notice council business and administrative council business technically aren't in, notice council business isn't in council policy. So we will be bringing forward recommendations regarding including that in our policy so that it's formalized. We talked about the Legislative Committee and its role. One thing that I hope that we can do as well is perhaps have a meeting of the Legislative Committee so that we could potentially talk about or do a survey regarding the lobbyists, our federal and state lobbyists, before any new contracts are developed. We also discussed the land acknowledgement, which we voted for, but we need the language for it. And then other items regarding study sessions. Some of these matters are being taken care of by individuals on the on the committee. We also had, I attended a meeting of the Water Commission. And what was really interesting to me, and I know I've brought this up before, but on a daily basis, South Adams County Water and Sanitation District has 900 leaks, water leaks. They do have a way of monitoring it for 90% of their customers, but not for the other 10%. So until they are able to have the other 10% online, they don't plan to inform the 90% when they have a leak. So do keep that in mind. And then also, we talked on a whole bunch of stuff. The mayor can talk about that too. But including zero escaping. And it came to mind during the discussion that we really needed to go back and look at what occurred when we approved an amendment to the Land Development Code regarding zero escaping. We did that in August of 2024. That required two public hearings. We had study sessions as well leading up to it. And I would like to be able to get an update on where we are regarding the implementation plan. Among the implementation plan items was that the city was going to pause all approvals for 90 days until the Land Development Code changes had been made for zero escaping. And as far, I'm happy to hear where we are on that.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, let's let's tackle maybe one of the the easier items. So if we can go to the municipal code. Ordinance 27, 2579, the, which is the ordinance that was adopted on August 19th. So adopted in the sense of the Land Development Code is implemented. What we are waiting on is MUNI Code, and Lee may have to help me pick up where I fall down, has not been codified. So we are waiting on MUNI Code to codify the language within the Land Development Code. So what that means? We adopted the ordinance. So it is in full effect, in law. Tomorrow, anybody since August 19th can go forward and use the zero scape in the approved plant list that was approved by council that night. We submit because we use MUNI Code as many or a majority of all local municipalities to help codify as part of our various codes to be presented in a regulatory document online for all. We wait for them to do such which could be based on the length of the document, their what's in the queue, or just their codification practices. So we have no control of how long it may take.
Who is this doing it?
MUNI Code, which if you look at the screen, ma'am, you'll
It's behind me, so it's
Yes, sorry. So what you'll see is in the Land Development Code, you'll see that they have on their page what's been adopted, but not codified.
And this is, is this a company that does our municipal code for us?
Yes, it does. It does Denver's. It does most municipalities, I think, certainly in Colorado. I think maybe throughout the country. I think there might be two primary contractors that do it. But I think what he's trying to convey is, can you go back one page back in the Land Development Code? Go to Land Development Code, the main. Yeah, click on browse. So what you have is the Land Development Code.
Can't see.
It's okay. So you have, anytime you're searching for the respective Land Development Code provision, right? You would typically for zoning districts, you'd go to Article Six or Article Four, rather. And then click down and you'd go through the sub provisions, right? But there are certain, there are certain code provisions that councils already adopted that is codified. It is in law. But it hasn't made its way through the process to be in the respective position that are the spot that's supposed to be in. But if you go back to the Land Development Code, primary page, it says adopted ordinances not yet codified on the first page, right here. And then there's three ordinances that you can scroll down and actually click on, right? So the 2579 is the one we're talking about. And then it has a PDF. It has a PDF of the zero scape code that you've already adopted. It just hasn't been submitted. It's not in in the actual MUNI Code format yet. It is in the law, though.
There were 280 plant types that that were recommended. There was a process for applying that you would submit in order to apply to the city. Has any of that been put in place?
I will answer it from a legal perspective. It is in 2579. So it is codified. It is the law of the city. It is there. If you scroll all the way down, plant lists should be included at the bottom of the page.
It was very slim when I looked at it. It was a very slim list.
Yes, this should be what was adopted in with the ordinance. So from a legal perspective, this is what the law is.
Okay, two, there were 279 of them, so I don't know how many pages that went on.
And looking at the motion from that evening, ma'am.
Uh huh.
And I'm actually having Dylan to confirm. It was an ordinance amending Commerce City Land Development Code, Article Seven, Division Five, and Article 11, Division Two, to expand permitted areas for ziric landscaping practices.
Correct. So let's say some, what happened? I have emails explaining that in last fall of 2024, that the city staff was going to be meeting with HOAs to explain to them what they could do with our new, under our new zero escaping rules. Did that meeting take place?
Yes, ma'am. That meeting took place in November.
And did that conversation take place?
Yes, ma'am. That conversation actually took place during our, what we call our Annual Connection Breakfast on November 6, 2024.
Okay, then let's say I am aware of an HOA that approved artificial turf in the front yard.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is prohibited in our Land Development Code that we amended. So how do we let them know that that is prohibited? How would they not know that they shouldn't have done that? How would they know that they shouldn't have done that? That the HOA shouldn't have approved that?
I would have said that the HOA should have known that they shouldn't have done it well before even the amendment because we've had a prohibition of artificial turf in the front yard that that existed before this amendment. It existed before the established or this Land Development Code and prior to that. So it it may have just been an action that the HOA took forward. So if in that instance, someone had made contact to the city and made us aware, we would have then engaged with the HOA to provide them some education as to the regulatory limitations and 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 rules in place. And we would have then informed the the resident, which, you know, this resident's now been caught, has been, you know, has been caught up in a in a decision that was, you know, that they relied on some decision, which, once again, we still have some level of discretion from from enforcement. I'll just leave it at that. But we would have engaged and have had a conversation to work through the matter. But, you know, once we engaged with the HOAs at that Annual Connection, that was a part of our education process was to inform them of what had been standing and what was going to be standing going forward with the amendment and what was the provisional changes and opportunities that their residents would now be afforded to to leverage.
Do we have e, addresses or email addresses for all of the HOAs to let them know?
I I couldn't tell you that on the Ms. Adame says yes because she says she sent them to.
You sent them the information on the zero escaping?
If I may.
Yeah.
The event that happened, the HOA Annual Connection that took place on November 6th, I had I had done a lot of cold calling and tried to get a lot of the contacts for the HOAs around Commerce City. And as a recap, for those who attended and those who did not attend, I sent in a copy of the presentations, flyers that were sent out, and a copy of the agenda. I have that email as well. I'm more than happy to provide that to our city staff so that they can move forward with that information.
Okay, great. So the information, you know, how to move forward on zero escaping, I think, was, is really important, because clearly, an expensive mistake was made for someone. And even if the city can be liberal about not enforcing it, I would hate to see it set a precedent that suddenly people in the neighborhood look around and say, oh gee, now I can have artificial turf in my front yard, too. And next thing you know, we've, you know, we've lost control of the process.
Okay, thank you. If I may, ma'am, I know that there's been, you know, a conversation around zero escaping. It came up at our water commission meeting with the water district, right? I think what, right, it's an important, it's an important goal that's been established by the council. So, you know, in turn, you know, what we've done is a good first step. We've set the regulatory framework for what new development can embrace. It's not required. They can embrace as they see and how they want to modulate. And like I said, John Smith, Paula Dean, whoever who owns a property can tomorrow take it out, know what they can do, and be able to, you know, retrofit their property. If there's a piece that's missing about marketing, getting the proactive word out into the community, then that's something that, you know, I need a little bit of guidance from the council of the body about, because, right, there's some concerted effort and time behind that and making sure that I put the right people and the resources behind that about coming up with a campaign, coming up with the time and the resources behind that and what that looks like and hitting the right mark that accomplishes the goals that you all with a body would like to see in getting that message out to the broader community. And if that's something that you all would like to see, then that's something I'm willing to go support in having that conversation with my communications team and our staff about what that looks like with their existing workload and how to be able to balance that going forward. Just something I'm putting out there for you.
All right. One of the things that we were doing was.
Mayor Pro Tem?
One, a horticulturist was somebody that you were going to be hiring under the last budget. Was that done?
Yes, ma'am. And I will tell you, we have been actively recruiting for that position, and we've just not come across yet qualified candidates. But it has been out there. We have been recruiting, and we continue to recruit.
That would be the logical person to handle it. But I would like to see you move forward with some way of informing people and encouraging people, because South Adams County Water and Sanitation District is not going to do it. We have to do garden in the box. The city does. And in typical cases, it's the water districts in these various cities. Various cities are also working with that same resource center, and their people are getting grants for $750 to remove their grass. We can't get that through South Adams County Water and Sanitation District, because they don't offer that to our residents or their customers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dukes.
Thank you. Actually, so a quick update, met with the PRG. We had a PRG meeting on Tuesday. Great meeting. We talked about a number of things. And actually, one of the things that I brought up to PRG is the idea of zero escaping, in a sense of, we don't have a communication plan or education outreach like other cities have done with water rise programs. And so I asked PRG if there's something we can bring to our table to talk through, what does it look like to educate our community and have water rise demonstration gardens in front of our rec centers and possibly in front of our city-owned buildings? And so, as you know, in some other cities, they have placards in front, and you walk through the little garden, and they explain the type of, in this case, the landscape that we approved. This should be on the PRG agenda in a couple of months, but more than happy to talk through it and think about what would be appropriate motion to make sure we have an education program so that folks who want to do zero escaping can do it. But I look forward to having that discussion in the future. And then essentially thinking about how can South Adams Water support us, whether it's financially, whether it's education. I think that'll be a great discussion to have to make sure we can actualize this ordinance. The other thing I attended was the Park After Dark. Thank you for all the city staff and everyone that we, I got this all, actually, this connection to Lorax, right? I speak for the trees, right? So Lorax over in Bell Creek, it was a great event for my family to be able to participate in. Surprisingly, there was no mosquitoes, which I was happy about, but it was a great, great connection, great turnout. It's just a great neighborhood. As you walk through Bell Creek and you think about some of the stuff we talked about with our land code and the idea of mixed residential, you know, we have models here in our city that is beautiful, and they do a great, they have done a great job at figuring out how to have mixed residential and mix some commercial and everything in one area. So I look forward to trying to model more what Bell Creek has done in near future. Juneteenth, I can't stress enough how great Juneteenth turnout was. I think year three has been, it was a great turnout from folks that, from small businesses selling T-shirts to our volunteers with all the committees. The DJ was amazing, as the DEI Commission did an amazing job with that. But also, just the location, I think this is something that I look forward to continue to grow over the next several years, and the level of excitement that our community has around these different events. The other big piece is that I'm happy that we had additional food, and this is something I'm thankful for the council approving that request that I had last year to increase our food so that we have food at every event. That was based on feedback from several residents. I think last year we had some food and some we didn't. So thankful for my colleagues to say, yes, we should increase the budget for that. And with that, I will give them time.
Okay, thank you. Other councilmembers have, Councilmember Dieter, Councilmember Ford.
Out tonight.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Douglas, do you have one more?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone that there is an epic meeting that's scheduled on Thursday, and probably both of the council representatives will be at CML as well as our city attorney, who had planned on being at the next epic meeting. So I just wanted to bring that forward, that I don't know what to do about that going forward.
Councilmember Kim?
Yeah, thanks for that reminder. So also, the other thing, too, is Music in the Park is coming up again, this, on the 26th at Frontera Park, starting at 6:00. Just a reminder for those who are still listening in, that's all.
Yeah. Epic meetings are by Zoom also. So I would hope that a council member will participate via Zoom.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your reports. Yes, just to follow up on Councilmember Kim meeting with Suncor. Yes, I would say that we need more participation from council to talk with them, because, you know, Suncor is going to talk about Suncor, put themselves out there as they're doing good things on their side. And I'm not saying that they're not, but there's a lot of work in progress still that has to occur. And as far as monitoring all that, I would like to see their radar detector that senses methane, just to see exactly how that operates. But overall, it was a good conversation. We also had a follow-up meeting with our water commission, Mayor Pro Tem Noble and city attorney and our city manager. So I brought up, councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem brought up a lot about that. So I just wanted to also include, I asked if we could do a new intergovernmental update on our intergovernmental agreement, IGA with the water district, because it does state in this agreement about coordinating and cooperating, coordinating cooperating to address water and wastewater issues within Commerce City. Coordinate and monitor current water supply ERUs that are available for development in the city and district as our city grows. And so I can have, I can share this with our city attorney or our city manager to put this out to council so you can see the IGA as it was written. The last update was 2015. Appreciate vice participation in the Juneteenth celebration honoring Edna Anderson as a community that has lived experience in Commerce City, born and raised in Commerce City. It was a very heartfelt reading that, her recognition, just, I think I read like 10 times, but reading that with that person there kind of took me up there, so I was taken back on that. But I do appreciate this, the city effort and making it what it was, this being the third Juneteenth, very heavily celebrated participation. I appreciate the council members as well who showed up to attend that. Also, I mean, I was going to bring up tonight with Councilmember Kim about our visit with the ICSC conference, and I would like, if we could maybe report out with economic development staff, kind of a brief on their side, what we all collectively, because we did have a debriefing, and it'd be nice if we could have that discussion so council knows what went on this year, if that's possible.
Yes, ma'am. That sounds like that's a perfect idea. I think we can do that during a study session, and we'll just have to be sensitive on any confidential information that was shared during your visit, but we can definitely be able to have that conversation with the rest of council.
Okay, yeah, appreciate that. Yeah, it was, I appreciate that Councilmember Kim came along this trip. Talking about 25,000 people that show up for that conference, it's a lot of people. And over those two days, it was a lot to see, really good presentations. Started out with a lady named Kendra Scott. She actually was in the jewelry business, and it's grown into a multimillion dollar project for her. But we'll wait until we have that update. Councilmember Dukes, did you have something else?
Just had a question for you regarding Suncor. I know you meant, thanks for the share out. Is there, was there a next step for, you thought, working with Suncor, partnering with them, thinking through how we're going to have a collaboration with the city?
Yes, well, first, just have more council members, those who want to attend and meet with Jeff and Lisa on a one-on-one basis. If it's two councilmembers, one, and then the next step would be actually coming to the city, just as we did with the developers and the landowners at that discussion about the overall operations of Suncor in that controlled setting. Councilmember Kim?
Yeah, just to tack onto that, basically, you know, it's a very candid discussion that we had. It was, I mean, it wasn't, I mean, they told us as far as what they were doing, as I reported out, right, as far as trying to make things better. But for us, I mean, it's, it would behoove us as a council, you know, I know Jeff and Alicia said that they would reach out, actually, Alicia would reach out to council members to try to schedule a, you know, have two folks, no more than two council members, meet up with them at whatever location to kind of further discuss, you know, whatever questions anybody here has, but also to be very candid and open. I, you know, it just, it's, it's a contentious topic, I'm aware, you know, talk about the oil and gas industry, and I know there's probably certain council members that may not want to attend at all or even want to hear them out. But I would, I personally would suggest, just to hear them out, provide your questions to them, so you can hear it from them as well, for them to answer. So, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe the next step on that was that they were going to reach out to all of council.
Yeah.
Right, to try to set something up.
Thank you for sharing that. You know, I think a partnership is always needed, necessary, and helpful. So I'm glad to hear that you're willing to have a partnership with them. I know back in the day, they used to host a community, they'd come out and kind of talk about, you know, what's happening at Suncor, what are the good, the bad? And I think they held it at El Hardin's at some point, where they're able to share what's happening. And, you know, I love to have that level of conversation with the community, with Suncor. And while I think the oil and gas updates are consistent, it'd be great to hear other parts of the story, to figure out how do we, how do we work together?
Right, because it is, it is heavy industrial. We're talking about oil and sand trapped, you know, it takes a lot of energy to pull those apart using certain chemicals. The level of heat intensity, there's all kinds of different fuels that's made, it's not just gasoline, it's not just fuel for planes, it's a lot. Talk about asphalt, talk about the road conditions lead up to their building, work with CDOT to plug those holes, because we have, you know, those roads are over there pretty bad. So overall, it was, it was a really good, like I said, it was good conversation, but nothing, you just can't hold back. You have to have those conversations, those questions that plague our community have to be answered in a way where we ask them to help mitigate those problems. And so going forward, it's going to be a better outcome, and that's going to take money, and that's also going to take us making sure that they pretty, you know, much have the community in mind, because we're talking about environment impacts and the air quality and all that. So they're right there on the edge of 270, and, you know, that's the face of Commerce City. As we talk about homeless, well, we have industry, too, so we have to be mindful of that.
Definitely got to make sure that we, I mean, like Mayor said, just transparency and accountability. I mean, that's really what it comes down to, you know, at the end of the day, just being able to collaborate, have that partnership. You know, obviously, when meeting with them, can't, you know, it's, let's try to just stick to the facts, no outlandish accusations, whatever the case may be, just hearing it, though, but just having a productive conversation. I feel that that's what we had. It was very productive, very candid, and I thought it was, I thought it was great overall.
Thank you. And then last, Councilmember, do you have something? Go ahead.
Yep. When you had your conversation with them, as the worst polluting refinery in the United States, as reported recently, did they give an indication what their timeline is for stopping pollution or stopping contamination from their refinery?
Yes, talking with Jeff, I indicated last year that they were the, one of the, as far as efficiency on the refinery, he said that indicated they were the best refinery out of the Canadian process, as far as Suncor goes. But as far as the nation, they were on the bottom. And he knows, he did indicate last year and this year, he's got a lot of work to do. And so that's one of your top priority is not to pollute into their environment around their plant, but I want to see how that's possible, so. It's a challenging, so I agree with you, it is. So I just want to also report that next month, I'll be attending the advocacy for National League of Cities in Columbus, Ohio, from July 15th to the 19th, Transportation Information Advisory Committee. And Councilmember Douglas, are you on that federal advocacy committee? And Councilmember Douglas, are you on the federal advocacy committee?
Yes, I'm on two of them.
Did you want to state what your, your committee, your commitment?
I'm on the real, which is race equity and leadership, as well as the NRCC, which is natural resources and something. Anyway, it has to do with the environment and environmental justice.
Okay, thank you.
And I would, I would like to tend, I am going to be attending that as well.
Is there any councilmembers have any thing else? Seeing none, we adjourn at 9:47.